I'd like to call to order the April 3, 2013, meeting of Milton School Committee. As is our custom, I invite you to rise with us in salute to the flag.
Plenarities to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On this evening's agenda, I have one edit that I've been told of, which is under the Policy Subcommittee, the first policy, 8A, policy BA, we are not going to take up tonight. Are there any other changes, additions to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll declare the agenda approved and we'll move on to citizen speak. Do we have anyone for citizen speak? We do not.
Mr. Pavlicek?
Yes.
I would just like to say Mr. Lynch just informed us that tonight, the school committee is being broadcast on Channel 2, but at the same time, on Channel 8, the selectmen's meeting is being broadcast, and even possibly the debates are being broadcast at 8 o'clock on Channel 11.
Channel 22, we're on.
We're on 22. Did I not say?
He said 2.
Oh, sorry.
So Milton Cable has gone high-tech.
Gone high-tech.
All right, first, order business approval minutes of March 6. Entertainer motion for approval minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Sheridan, seconded by Mr. Walker. Any corrections, comments, additions, deletions? Hearing none, I'll call Phil Gold. All those in favor of the minutes of March 6, 2013? That is unanimous. Thank you. At that, we will move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Gabor Martin.
Thank you, Chairman Pavlicek. At the request of the school committee, I'd like our boys' basketball coach, Sean LaPresty, and one of our co-captains, Tyler Green, to join the school committee at the table, representing the Division 2 So-Sectional finalists. So the school committee takes a lot of pride in recognizing students and teams, and they ask for you to be here tonight. So, a few words?
A few words? I think behalf of the team, we really appreciate all the support that we get throughout the town, like just walking in, walking in the hallways, just hearing everybody talk about the games, and just all the excitement and like bringing all of Milton together, playing and just playing for Milton. It's crazy. It's an experience, and thank everybody.
Well said.
Anything from the coach?
I'll say exactly what Tyler said. You know, we have a great fan base here at Milton. We have great community support. You know, it was really nice to see a lot of alumni out there at games and some of our alumni parents as well. And it's just great to see everyone together fighting for the same goal, which was to win. Unfortunately, that didn't happen, but it was a highly successful season for us.
You made us very proud.
Thank you.
Any comments from the school committee? No, Ms. Padera.
I have to thank you so much for, first of all, I think at least one of our meetings got postponed, or we were trying, at least. But such great spirit, and you know, I've been to a couple basketball games over the years, but this was just a building of excitement in each game. I mean, the game at Reggie Lewis was unbelievable, and I somehow knew you guys were going to pull it out, but I was like, "Stop making us wait. Just take the lead." "Why are we waiting this long? Just do it." You played such a tough game, and it was a very tough team, and we had such a great crowd. It just built such excitement, and like you said, there were a lot of alumni. I knew they were alumni because someone told me, but I just knew them from the high fives. We were flying back and forth, just so excited, and it was just great for our school spirit. There's nothing like that, like a successful team and great games to build the whole community coming together. So, thank you. We had, you know, great, great, great times, and I expect you to do it again and again and again.
Thank you.
We're very proud of you, and Tyler, you talked about the excitement and the support, but it was all because of you guys. You guys played your heart out, and you did it with grace. And Coach LaPresty said you didn't quite win the big one, but you know, I was at that game, and right up to the final minute, we were in it, and I thought we had it. So, thanks for winning with grace, thanks for losing with grace, because at the end of the day, that's what it's all about. The competition is what matters, and we did it better than almost anybody. So, congratulations and thanks.
Thank you.
I have two things to say. One, when you were at, was it UMass? When you were at UMass, one of the MIA officials came over to me and said, "Are you the superintendent?" And I said, "Yes." She said, "Lady, you travel with more fans than anyone in the state." And so, I have to tell you that I've said to Coach LaPresty, "What amazes me is all of the students at Milton High. You played, and you practiced, and you dedicated all that time, and you performed under pressure, but all those fans thought they were out there playing with you, and every single day, they thought they were getting up for the next game and ready." And so, those are wonderful, wonderful memories that you'll carry the rest of your life. You really gave something very special to a school. I want to thank you very, very much.
Two more.
Oh, good, two more.
Time out.
Nope. Come on.
Nope.
Yes, perfect. Bring up, that would be perfect.
Would you like to introduce these guys?
This is John J. De Silva. John J. was our point guard and basically our leading rebounder this year. And this is Akeem Matundo, and he was a guy that played a great role for us off the bench this year as a senior, playing out of position basically the whole year for us. Two seniors as part of our corps.
I know I came late, and I apologize. I just got out of work. But you know how proud I am of you guys, and some of you who I've known for quite a while now and see many of the games, and appreciate so much what you guys have done. And I know maybe you didn't get as far as you wanted to, but you really got far. And I'm really, really proud of you as a former basketball mom, and as a school committee member, and as a town member. I just think that you guys have done a fabulous job, and I'm sorry to see you go. But I will come to some games next year, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
Coach, did you say point guard and leading rebounder?
I did say point guard and leading rebounder. Not often the combination that you usually see.
Right.
But John J. was a, he carried us in a few games rebounding as a point guard, which is definitely a quality that you love to see out of all your guards, but he definitely had a special knack for it.
I just said, it's interesting that you say that Akeem played out of position. I think in one game, I saw him play three positions. I think he covered a 6'6" guy, and then he was covering a point guard, and then he was doing more than his share with different positions. So, having known Akeem for seven or eight years now, it was a pleasure to watch him play and a pleasure to watch you all play, you two, Tyler and John J.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. We're thrilled by your accomplishments and your demeanor and how you played the game and how you represented us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Want to walk that trophy, want to walk that trophy by those school committee members? Congratulations.
Nice job. So, does that go in the case?
Yes.
Yeah?
It's been on the front.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to invite to the table the Milton High School's Site Council. Would you join us? And once you all get seated, under the leadership of Principal James Jett, I'll let Principal Jett make the introductions. Welcome.
First of all, thank you. Have a great turnout for my Site Council, which is very nice. On behalf of the Site Council, I would like for each individual to go around and introduce themselves and let you know their role on the Site Council. We have some parents, teacher, community member, and administration. And I guess I'll start to my left, working our way to the right.
I'm Betty White. I'm a parent and a community representative.
I'm Mike Sewell. So, I'm a community representative.
Michelle Cruiser, Vice Principal of the High School.
James Jett, Principal.
Veronica Guerrero-Massia. I'm a parent representative.
Kathy Grayley, Spanish teacher.
And thank you. Once again, I feel like we're regulars at the school committee, so I'm going to apologize in advance if some of the information is redundant. And I do want to let you know that you do have, in your possession, a revised PowerPoint that was delivered today. I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of that, the pages and numbers, and we will go through that piece by piece. We have a couple of Site Council members that aren't with us this evening. We have Ben Kelly. We also have Vicky Makati, who's a community member, and then Arianna Keith, who is a student that is not with us this evening. So if we, if we turn to the next page, we'd like to go over the agenda very quickly. We'll give you an overall of the assessment performance. We'll talk about the proficiency gap analysis, and then we'll lead into our Milton High School's School Improvement Plan, which will highlight some of the NEAS initiatives as well, which you heard a little bit about already. And then we'll end with some highlights and obviously some questions, but feel free to ask questions throughout. Overall, according to the state accountability, we're very pleased that we are a Level 1 high school, meaning that we met our target areas in all categories, the aggregate, students in high needs. In terms of high needs, I'll give you the definition of students who are ELL, former ELL, low-income, and special ed. We do have a couple of areas that are highlighted, and we'll talk about it in a little more depth. African-American student population did meet the target, but as you can see, we have a lot more work to do with that particular subgroup. But while working on that, we do not want to become complacent and lose sight of all the success we have overall. So it is, we're making significant progress in that area, but we still have some improvement to go.
At this time, I'm going to just review some of our MCAS data. One of the things we first do before we revise a school improvement plan is we look at all the different data that we have from the previous year. We've seen this before, but I'm going to go over it briefly with you. On the left side, we have our English Language Arts, all students versus state. We had 95% of our students receive advanced or proficient. We had no ELI failures last year, and only five students in needs improvement. So they performed very, very well. For mathematics, we had 86% in advanced or proficient last year. 63%, though, achieved advanced. So that's a very high number of students that achieved advanced, and only 2% of the students that took the exam last year failed. For biology, for biology, we had 82% of our students achieving advanced or proficient. This was an increase from 2011, where we had 75% in 2011 achieving advanced and proficient. So we're trending in the right direction for the biology data. In terms of the growth, now that we report out on how we're growing in terms of ELA for grade 10, this shows the district, and the arrow is pointing to where grade 10 is located. We are achieving at a very, very high level, and one of the things that happens when you sometimes are achieving at a very high level is sometimes we don't get as much growth as we want to, because it's almost like getting water from a stone, you know? But we are very proud of the achievement, and we still do want to grow. So that's why we're up in the higher part, and a little bit towards the left, that shows lower growth, but very high achievement. And again, it has 95% proficient or higher. For mathematics, again, we're still achieving at a very high level. We had 86% receiving proficient or higher. I would like to see, or we would like to see our growth a little bit higher in that area, but we are still achieving at a very high level for the mathematics. For biology, we do not have a growth chart, because we do not have enough years of data to have a growth chart at this time. So that'll be coming hopefully in future years.
The next slide you're looking at is somewhat of a history of the SAT performance of our high school students. One of the things that I do want to point out is that we are seeing significant growth, but one of the things I'm most proud of as a new principal at the high school is looking at the total number of test takers. If you look at the averages, we're above the state in our math, critical reading, and writing. And I apologize, we don't have the state average on there, but we could get that to you. I do have it in my possession. The state average for math is 523 for the state of Massachusetts. It's 506 for the critical reading for the state, and 500 for writing. Now, it looks like we're hovering right around the state, but I do want to point out that Milton is one of the small communities that have 100% of the kids participate in the SATs. Now, I think that is very, very great. From students who do extremely well, to some of our struggling learners, and those right in the middle, we have 100% of the students that take it, and that's something that we're very, very proud of. Overall, you can see from 2008, there is a slight dip from 2008. That could have been an individual cohort. But as you can see, from last year, 2011, we made some gains. Small gains, but gains nonetheless. We went from our 527 average score in 2011 on the math to 529. We dipped a little bit in the critical reading, slightly, by a percentage point. And in our writing, we dipped a little bit as well. But again, 100% of our test takers are taking that test. The next sheet, and I want to pass these out to you just to take a look. We'll talk about the AP. I apologize, I just got these books just recent, hot off the press, talking about our AP scores. And I should preface this conversation that Superintendent Gormly has been working with the leadership, talking about how we could continue to push forward our SAT scores, how we could continue to make progress in our APs. So we set up a meeting about a week ago with Jenny Warren from the College Board. She came in, she gave us an assessment on our data, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that. So this is a little off-script, but I think it was very important for you guys to have this information. And someone has my notes. He passed my notes on there. There's a booklet with some writing on it. No, that's not mine. There's a booklet that has some paper with writing on it. I apologize, someone just passed mine. Yeah, will you check over there? Needless to say, I'll go over this AP, and then once it comes up, I would definitely... As you can see, Milton High School, we have an increase, a significant increase in the number of students who are actually taking the AP since 2001, which started 167, and in 2012, we have 299 students that took the, took an AP exam. The total number of tests taken, some kids take two, some kids take three, students take three. That increased significantly. We're up to 608 tests taken. In terms of the students who were taking the test and received a qualifying score, which was a 3, 4, or 5, that allows them to receive some college credit, was 66%. That was, I think is roughly around 399 tests passed. So about 60, 66%, which I thought was great. Percentage of students that received a qualifying score, again, tests earned for 2012, 70%. So again, you see a significant increase. The booklet that you have, I would like for you to turn to page, I believe it's 17. If you turn to page 17 on that booklet, if you look at the national average for public high school graduates scoring a 3 or higher, the national average is 19.5. If you go up to the top, three down on page 17, Massachusetts average is 40, I mean, excuse me, 27.9. That separate sheet that I gave you, Equity and Excellence from the College Board, Milton High School is hovering around 45.6%. So that is huge. And I would like for you to hold on to these books a little bit longer, because as we get further into the presentation, we'll talk about how we're doing overall in terms of some of our subgroups as well. So again, Milton High School currently offering 20 AP courses, which is higher than any of the institutions around, public, private, or parochial. So I think that's a great thing. We have a number of students that attempt to take a test, well, a small number of students that attempt to take the test, even if a test is not offered. We allow Milton Academy this year, I think we're going to have eight students taking some of our AP tests, because they don't offer them at the, Milton Academy. So we have eight students that are already trying to come over and take the test here, because we offer that test here. So I think that's a great thing for a small community, and we continue to strive. The next group, when we start talking about the overall data, we see that we're doing extremely well. However, if you remember to that first slide, we highlighted one of our subgroups. Our high needs, which is the low-income, special ed, ELL, and former ELL students. Meaning it's, they consider you ELL after one year, then you have to take a test, but we still want to keep those kids in mind, because it doesn't mean that they come here for one year and all of a sudden, they're immediately proficient in English. They still have work to do. And then we have our African-American subgroup that we are comparing against their white peers. And we want to make sure that we're closing that proficiency gap. So if you go back, we'll flip to the next slide again, just putting that slide up there again to tell you why we're focusing on African-American black students, because the increase that we need to make is significant, even though it's a positive standpoint where we are right now in terms of meeting our target. Next slide. So the next slide, we have a couple of questions on the right. Have the gaps in performance between students in the subgroups? Or I should say, overall decrease, absolutely? As you can see, the difference between our African-American students and their white peers, the difference in 2012 is 1.6, whereas in 2008, it was 6.7. So we're making significant progress over a period of time, and as you see, it's gotten... We had a slight dip in 2009, a slight dip in 2010, made some progress in 2011, and significant progress in 2012. Have all groups gained over time? Absolutely. What is the magnitude of the gaps between the group? As you can see, ELA, the gap is relatively small. But if you go down to the bottom, even though we're making some progress in math, the difference is still significant. And so we want to make sure we continue to put some extra attention on that. And we'll talk about some of those initiatives as we move through the group. Next slide. So as you can see right here, this is the cumulative proficiency index. We're only talking, if you look at the N right here, that's the number of students, African-American students that took the test. So I don't want you, you know, we're only focusing on that subgroup right now. As you can see, the gap from 2011 to 2012 on mathematics, even though it was a significant difference overall, we're slowly, slowly decreasing that gap. We went from 24 down to 21.9. I wish I had the little infrared for sure.
Time to think.
Okay, okay. So 24% on the bar right there to 21.9. So again, it's shrinking, but we're still making a difference. If you look to the right, under ELA, this is our subgroup according to the state. We do significantly, we're performing at a significantly higher level than the state, but we still have to do it within the district between white peers and African-American students. But according to the state, our African-American students are performing at a much higher level. That's the difference, 21.6. And then when you get to biology, again, in 2008, we were doing 23.6%. There was a difference between what Milton does. Milton is the orange, the blue or gray is the state. Again, it's pretty significant. We had a little bit of a narrowing of the margin in 2009, 10, and 11, but again, a significant increase in the difference from the state in 2012. It's a 25.5% difference. So when we start talking about our African-American subgroup, and this is where I'm going to have you turn to page 21 in that booklet. Again, I'm going to show you the national average for AP. The percentage of test takers is 9.2. If you go down to where it says the United States, midway down in the green, that's the percentage of AP exam takers is 9.2. And in terms of kids who are receiving, students receiving a qualifying score on the national level was 4.4. That is significantly low. For the town of Milton, again, we're, if you look up here at the town of Milton, we have, for this year, 82 test takers. 51 out of those 82, 62% received a qualifying score of 3 or better. Significantly, significantly higher than the national average. And then if you go down about 10 slots from the United States, Massachusetts, 53% of the population, I mean, 5.3, excuse me, African-American, the test takers. And then receiving a qualifying score in Massachusetts, African-American students, only 2.9. Again, if you look at the town of Milton, we're doing significantly better than the state, than the country, and we still want to achieve at a higher level. So obviously, we have other subgroups, small and, much smaller than numbers, but Asian students who are qualifying, 21 out of 40, 53% in 2011. Every single one of those groups have increased. Every single one of them.
So just some overall highlights from the data. We've seen an increase in the number, the percentage of students receiving proficient and advanced in biology, mathematics, and English Language Arts in 2012. We had no ELA failures in 2012, and only five students in needs improvement. Our math failures decreased going from 2011 to 2012. We had 100% of our students participate in taking the SAT. And also, the participation in AP exams has increased, and our percentage of qualifying scores has increased. So it's a lot of good things going on here. And with the SAT, I just want to mention, we're outperforming Massachusetts and also the national average. The national average SAT scores are lower than the Massachusetts average SAT scores.
And I do want to add, because there was some conversation and a lot of concern, obviously, from our superintendent, which I agree, about the AP honor roll that's reported in the papers. And it was good to learn this, that we were concerned why we weren't making it when we were providing access to a lot more students. As you can see, we had 299 test takers, 608 tests taken. And we weren't making that honor roll. And then you have places like a Chelsea or somewhere else making it. When we spoke with the lady from the College Board, she says, "Listen, very similar to our MCAS scores in ELA, you're pretty high already. It's hard to be recognized." They were being recognized from going from 40 test takers up to about 70 test takers. So they were increasing it by, you know, 70 test takers. And so they were trying to reward and inspire people to do a little bit, a better job at it, whereas Milton is already there. Now, with that being said, we did have conversations on how we can increase the number of qualifying scores. We had 399... We had three hundred and ninety-nine, we wanna get that to six hundred and eight, the same number of tests taken. So I just, I, I wanted to share that with you.
So on this next slide are the core values of the Milton Public Schools. And when we develop our school improvement plan, we concentrate on the different, the five different areas, um, the five different core values that we have. So the site council, after we take a look at the data from the previous year, we take a look at the existing school improvement plan. We discuss the needs that we have, uh, we get feedback from teachers and faculty members and students, and then we try, we make revisions on our school improvement plan. So next, we're gonna talk about some of the things that we've put into our school improvement plan uh, for this year.
So every Thursday, uh, the leadership team meets with the, uh, the department head, and the department head then goes out and meets with the individual uh, the, uh, teachers in the department. We've been talking about the revising and the realignment of the curriculum to meet the new Common Core standards. Uh, i- and also talk a little bit about PARC, the assessment piece of that. We talked a little bit about that again today in our early release day, which I'll talk a little bit more about. But we're trying to meet some of the AP standards. So there's a lot of work that's being done, um, really delving into the, the uh, the heart of our curriculum, and trying to make sure that we're making the necessary advances, not only instructionally, but how to reach students uh, academically. We also talked about identifying the departments, in terms of which departments are gonna really hone in on the tw- uh, twenty-first century learning skills. We talked a little bit about that in our previous presentations on the nineteenth of September and November. Um, but we're continuing to do that, because we're finding that we have to constantly tweak, tweak, and tweak. As we revise the curriculum, we look at these skills, which department does it best fit under, but making sure every department is familiar with all seven of them. Um, and so we're, we're still working on that, we're still modifying that, and creating and reformatting our curriculum guide. That is something that will be uh, continuously uh, being worked on. I know you, you heard our presentation a few, I don't know, a few weeks ago about the changes in our math, uh, we're talking about that. I, I walked through the building today, we, we had some of our world language teachers really trying to fine tune their curriculum in world language. Um, when we talk about the test, and it's always math, it's always uh, English, it's always science, but we're trying to see how every single discipline in the Milton High School, Milton High School could really help out and bolster up some of our, our student achievement in our test scores. Uh, development of a plan to uh, for regular review and evaluation and revision of the curriculum, that will be ongoing. Revise the school-wide rubrics. We have a, a rubrics committee that just did a presentation, it uh, forwarded to all of the staff in their mailboxes to kinda look at it, see how that rubric fits in what they're doing within their curriculum, and see if there's anything that needs to be tweaked. So we will be revising that again, and uh, looking at that in the coming weeks. Uh, provide targeted support for standardized assessment, MCAS support, SAT support. Um, I'll probably touch upon it again, we'll talk about our AP. In the past, you know, the students come very briefly, they get information about the, the AP courses, the expectations. We're gonna do an AP night uh, for our parents, it's guided by some of our department heads and our teachers, to really spend the night to do what's very similar to our program of studies. To make sure students fully understand um, what's involved, what's expected, if there's supports. We wanna encourage as many kids as we can, any, many students as we can to kinda uh, really work their way up to the AP level. Um, and then assess, uh, recognize student successes. Um, again, we have a lot of students, and we'll talk of a little bit about that in our highlights, that they're achieving at a high level. We're talking, we're right now getting a lot of the students, their college acceptances. I wish, I wanted to have that for you, a little bit more uh, detail tonight, but we had some kids that just, some students that just got accepted again to, to more schools today. Um, so we're looking forward to uh, sharing that information with you in the coming uh, week. We talk about excellence in the classroom. Um, I just, again, I can't even stress it enough, um, the appreciation I have for the school committee to endorse the uh, five early release days. There was some wonderful work going on today, and the part of that, I walked in the classroom, I see Nancy Michaels working with Larry Jordan, who was a special ed teacher, helping him uh, with his support with students in math, and revising that, working on that. I see the science teachers in biology working on common assessments and trying to uh, hone in on that. Uh, math teachers are working together, because we're changing the course one, course two, changing to that. They're really talking about developing student portfolios and having common assessments for each unit. So um, that collaborative time and those relationships that are being built during that time, and the sharing and the professional discourse, is allowing teachers to really do that work um, during uh, uninterrupted time, so we appreciate that. Um, we talk about increase the opportunities for teachers, I just, I shared that, increase teachers' observations and follow-up discussions. Out of our learning walk with the administrative team and a few of the department heads, uh, the charge now is for our department heads to really start the learning walks with teachers um, during the school day on a more regular basis. Ideally, what we were doing, we're talking about it to make sure there's no additional expense. We will relieve teachers of their duties to allow them to do these learning walks on their planning period, um, when they would normally have a duty. One of the administrators will relieve them, or one of the building subs, to allow them to go in, observe another teacher, give them feedback on some really targeted focus areas, and then have an opportunity midway, you know, twenty minutes in the classroom, have an opportunity to have a wrap-up discussion, and hopefully share that information within their department head. But we're still trying to tweak that, because we wanna make sure not only in departments, but across disciplines as well. Next.
The next uh, core value is collaborative relationships and communication. And one of our goals for this year was to increase the communication between the high school and the community. Some of the new things that we took on this year is we started Milton High Happenings online blog, and it's to celebrate student successes, departmental success, um, any type of school achievement. And so that gets updated approximately once a week, um, and so that's some exciting news. We can, we can have community members sign on to receive the newsletter via email, um, or they can just check it on their own if they'd like. We also have a MHS Tweets Twitter account for some short newsbursts and updates, uh, for both students and faculty and community members. We are also linked up with um, Boston dot com and Milton Patch, so we retweet, we retweet some of their news, they retweet ours. So we, we get it out there that way. Um, in it, in addition to those new items, uh, we also are continuing our use of Naviance for col- college planning and communication with um, parents regarding college and career planning, and our headline use with teacher uh, headline pages, email blasts, phone alerts, loc- uh, getting our news out to local media, um, monthly forecast from uh, Mr. Jet, et cetera. Um, yes.
I just wanna add one piece to that, that we didn't uh, put on here, but it comes without question. Uh, Parent Information Night, again, just stood before the entire uh, faculty today, and we're talking about whether you're in the art department, whether you're in athletics, you're a teacher, you're a coach, whether you have an organization or activity like the robotics or the debate. We're really gonna start thinking about inviting students from maybe the elementary, maybe the middle school to come up and be a part of it. As opposed to going to them, we feel as though if they come to the flagship school of the district, um, our hope is to keep all quality students in the building, in the district, as much as we can. And so that's another push for us, is really promoting some of the wonderful things that are going on in, at the high school level.
Additionally, we are planning um, in the future, actually in May, an AP Information Night, which is something new for parents. And I, we also have our College Planning Night for parents, et cetera, um, open house, et cetera. Um, we are also looking to, to continue to develop different uh, community partnerships, that we have just a list of different uh, organizations that we work with, from other schools to colleges. Um, we had just today Romeo and Juliet, and we had kids from other, students from other schools here, um, watching the play with our students. We have the French consulate who sponsors the Francophonie event, which is a wonderful event. Uh, we applied for the calculus project proposal, we're just uh, waiting to hear back from, about that. Uh, we work with the DA's office on school safety, um, and one of, one great opportunity that we talked a lot um, about during a site council was uh, the Schools to Careers partnerships, and just partnerships with local businesses and increasing those partnerships. School to Careers is a great opportunity for students to think about um, post-secondary uh, and clear career planning, like what they might wanna do, either directly after school or directly after college, and it gives them a chance to explore different careers, and it's a partnership with eight, eight different schools. And they go on, onsite to work, uh, work sites, and um, it could be like biotech, or nursing, hospitality industry, et cetera, so that's very exciting. Our next core value is respect for human differences. Uh, we do a lot of work with our diversity committee here at the high school. Uh, we actually run a school-wide activity, activity, school-wide activities for Martin Luther King Junior Day every year. They actually have an assignment in their junior English class that they have to complete every year. We have had a multicultural mural in the main lobby. Uh, we've had student-led forums to talk about school culture and human differences. One, new addition to uh, this core value, uh, one new goal for us this year is continuing to educate students and families about good decision-making and adolescent well-being. This year, we had a wonderful presentation by Chris Heron. Uh, we had a student presentation and a community presentation. Uh, we had the I Am Dirt production, which was related to, it was gender roles, um, substance abuse. It covered a whole slew of different areas and things that uh, our adolescents go through. Um, we, in the biology curriculum, they added a new unit on substance abuse for this year. And we're also going to be continuing our relationship with Dr. Knight on the Team Safe initiative. Um, along with this, we are still developing um, our advisory program. That was something that came from Niasc, that we have to have an advisory program. Uh, we've had it in the past, but we're still developing it this year. We have an advisory committee that's analyzing um, what they're doing in advisory. They had surveys uh, for teachers and for students in terms of how the advisory is going, and what improvements we can make for the future. Uh, and also, we have uh, our implementation of our anti-bullying curriculum. For risk-taking and innovation for education, we're always looking for opportunities for students to think critically. Some of the highlights from this year, and this is not, there are more than just what's on this list. Uh, we had the Biograph in Ms. Tom's biology classes, and that's a National Science Foundation-funded multi-year research study for uh, better learning in biology. We had uh, professors from colleges come and visit and see what she's doing in her class. Um, and they want to model what she's doing in their classrooms and co- on the college level, so it's pretty exciting.
If I could, if I could interject, the uh, the professor from MIT was extremely impressed with the level of our intellect of our students and how well they navigated through that program that they had. I, to be honest, which I couldn't understand it. Uh, the kids are actually navigating their way through it, and they understood it, they were able to communicate it uh, to the professor, and he, he was really impressed. He said by five, Milton was one of the best schools that he, uh, their program has gone to.
And it's all about improving the achievement, especially in that bio MCAS. So, um, we have the debate team who have done wondrous, wondrous work. Um, we'll talk a little bit more about those in the hi- that in the highlights, um, but we have the debate class, and then they also do work after school to prepare. Uh, we have the mock trial class, they go to mock trial competitions around the state. Um, they have a class during the day, and they also do work after school. Uh, we want to bring back the speech program to the high school, so that's something we're looking forward to do, doing. We uh, have our robotics class, and many of the students in that class also are part of the robotics team, who are competing, competing all over the state in robotics competitions. And then we're also making a real push for students to take part in senior project their senior year, and take on um, valuable and engaging uh, projects. We'll talk about one in just a moment. Also, we wanna continualize our specialized programming um, to support students. We have our alternative program, which has been very successful. We have our student support team, which involves guidance counselors, adjustment counselors, and we meet um, bi-weekly. Um, we have SAT and MCAS preparation, and target, we target students to take those classes, and we also have our upcoming AP Information Night. There are, there are some other items that are not on the school improvement plan that the site council has been discussing, just to let you know. Um, some of the things, uh, hot topics that we've been discussing on the side are technology policy, um, in particular, cellphone use and use of other electronic devices in schools. We actually collected, we have data from comparable schools in the area, seeing what their technology policies are, and also their dress code policies and attendance and tardy policies. And we're trying to, we might not necessarily change what we have, but review and analyze what we have, see what other schools are doing, to see if we're doing the best that we can do to have um, just a wonderful environment for our students.
When we talk about highlights, and it, and I'm, I will ask members of the site council to jump in, because I feel like that we uh, really uh, took a lot of the airtime, and a lot of this information is definitely shared with them. But I would talk about a few highlights, and then I would ask for some of the site council members to really give their experience in um, to, with the site council and some of the things that we talked about. But our Life Smarts team, uh, for the second year in a row, you probably heard about it, won the tournament on sudden death. And I, I apologize, I forget who they beat in sudden death, was it Newton and Needham? I forget, we wanna say whoever it was, it was a top school. And uh, they're heading to Atlanta for the Nationals. Uh, Milton High School Robotics Team hosted a statewide robotics uh, competition. Um, we have the upcoming Relay for Life, uh, which is May eighteenth. You should know that this is um, a, a senior project, um, spearheaded by Leana Massey-Green, with the uh, Mike Matasoff, who was a history teacher as her advisor. She spoke to the entire staff for the first five minutes of our uh, uh, Professional Development Day. She asked, did you do it? And I gotta say that she's really uh, taken this very serious. She called the meeting probably about a month ago from custodians. She had uh, members from the American Cancer Society, she had the administration, she had teachers, uh, food service, she had everybody at the meeting. Um, I was surprised, it looked like a Superintendent Gormley meeting here. Um, and she, she ran the entire thing, and I wanna let you know, she has a website up that, if you can't make the uh, event on the eighteenth, you can make a contribution online. She's at night events promoting it, um, and she's also trying to get together some teams to walk in the event. So if you guys are interested, we welcome everyone who would like to participate. Thirty-seven uh, students from Milton High were selected as a senior sembers, semzba, excuse me. One member selected for the Eastern Division Honors Music Festival, and Gary Good was selected as the festival conductor. Uh, I think that's great, um, not only for our students, but for our faculty members as well. Um, Milton uh, hosted the state debate uh, just recently. Um, unfortunately, I was not able to uh, attend that, I injured my back, I'm embarrassed to say at the talent show. It wasn't doing the Harlem Shake. But I'm embarrassed that I, I couldn't do that. Uh, forty-two schools, I thought that was great, forty-two schools. Uh, uh, Nick Fitzgerald, who's an English teacher, and Nancy Wan, uh, Wan, they did an outstanding job communicating with our faculty and staff. I think they probably used every room in the building, um, every part of the facility, I think it was great. Uh, commu- community building through clubs and activities and sports. Um, I just wanna piggyback on the comments that were said about the basketball team. I would say there was an increase in students at the wrestling matches. I would say there was an increase of students at the female hockey, who I continue to promote, because I think they're very talented. Uh, we need to get more people out there. From every single aspect, you see students coming together. It culminated a little bit with the state tournament, because it builds community. But I will say this, today we had a senior assembly. Um, and I don't know if Superintendent got her uh, email yet. Uh, we were asked to do kind of initiative for uh, the Eye Opener, Channel Five. Uh, so yesterday, excuse me, yesterday, we had all of our seniors down there at the end of that. And without question, we asked them if they're doing activity, and they immediately got up, they formed a thirteen. Uh, John Binder, who was the leader in the Harlem Shake, they did it. Sean LaPresti, who sent in the video yesterday afternoon, believe it or not, the lady watched it, wrote us back very enthusiastically and said, we have you guys scheduled for April twenty-fifth, at five AM, and uh, five-ten AM and six-ten AM. So you get to see Milton High celebrating some school, uh, community, school spirit on uh, Channel Five, the Eye Opener. So I thought, that was, that wasn't in this presentation, because it was late.
No, it was mine, but now it's done.
So you did get the email. Uh, the twenty-fifth. Um, uh, Boston Globe Scholastic Award winners, four students received gold keys, five received silver, and nine students received honorable mention. And as I said, uh, some college acceptances. We had six students that I was talking to this past Monday, from MIT to Brown to B.C. to Northeastern. Um, so the list goes on, to Maryland, to, you know, I'm trying to think of all of them, but we'll hopefully get that list uh, to you as soon as possible.
I heard one from Harvard that I know of, not mine, but one from Harvard.
One from Harvard, so the, 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 the college acceptances in the uh, institutions, that list will continue to grow, and it continues to come in. Um, and so we're looking forward to a very successful year. So I would like to, Betty or Mike or Kathy, if you'd like anything to share?
Well, this is my second year on the site council, and I just have to say that I've known James Jet for many years and worked with him before, but... He just does such an outstanding job as an administrator at this high school. I'm so happy he is the principal. It's been a pleasure to work with this entire group, but he's just, he's just outstanding. So that's what I want to say.
Thank you.
I'll echo that.
I'm different.
I'll echo that. James and Michelle have been great. While a lot of the stuff that Michelle and James went through is, are things that we went through months ago, what's topical right now for us is the dress code policy and the attendance policy and the technology policy. And I think those have been the best discussions, because we've had perspectives from the parents and the students and the teachers that, not surprisingly, are not all on the same page. And so it'll be very interesting to see where that shakes out, because, you know, it was very instructive to me, because students now use backpacks a lot more than they did when I was going to high school, and for a lot of different things, and the teachers have a different perspective. So, so those discussions, to me, have been the most interesting, and they brought out the most, the most flavor from the teachers and the students, and I think that's great. And I'll be very interested to see where all that shakes out.
Hi there. So this is my, I think maybe my sixth year on site council, so I've been with Dr. Drouet, Dr. Rangio, and now Mr. Jett. It's a great experience for me. I keep coming back every year, because as a teacher, we sometimes feel a little isolated in the classroom, like I see my colleagues. But what an opportunity for me to be able to talk dress code and with the parents and with the students. I saw a little smirk when we were talking about the dress code, because it does mean different things to different people. So it's very important for the seven or eight of us to get around in the table and hash these things out. So to me, and for, I'm sure for Ben Kelly, the other teacher as well, it's just a really nice experience to hear different perspectives, and it's been a great experience this year. We've had a great outcome. I think we're pretty much full every time we meet. Attendance has been great, and everybody fully participates as well. So it's nice to get everybody's opinions.
I will say, these topics are part of the handbook, so any revision or changes, obviously, we will bring that information forward to you. It was very important for us to do this. Again, we want to continue to have an environment that's conducive to learning, is free of distraction. And as you know, there are a lot of distractions out there. So even though we talked a lot about the dress code, that might be the hot topic, a lot of it was about the technology. Obviously, there's an advancement piece initiative for the technology. How do you stay ahead of the curve, or how do you keep up with the students with the Wi-Fi access? I learned something today, which I won't share, because it's being televised. But again, the students are very savvy, they're very knowledgeable, and they could probably teach a lot of the faculty members on how to use the technology. But I say that very innocently. They're a very great group of students, and we look forward to making some progress on this. One thing I did not mention, and I would like to talk about, we're actually in the conversations of trying to re-implement speech at the high school, whether it be on a trial, an elective, and we're going to talk to you about that a little bit more, but we've, we've been in discussions about that. So I just want to give you the advance notice on that, that we're looking at doing that. Obviously, this late in the year would not necessarily be mandatory, but we're looking at how do we infuse that back into the curriculum at the high school. Questions?
I have, thank you. That was a great presentation. I mean, really, you guys did a great job with a lot of data and a great presentation. A lot of enthusiasm is really obvious, and that's really nice to see. And I would agree with you about Mr. Jett. I mean, as a parent and as a school committee member, I've been very happy. And also with the Twitter and the blogs, and I know that came from you. So it's been, it's been a great thing. I had a couple of questions. When you talked about the increase in AP classes, is it increased, on page 17, is it increase in taking the classes or taking the exam? I think you said exam.
Well, I, I will say this, I'm sorry. It's an exam, but it was an increase this year in terms of the number of classes as well. It went up from nineteen to twenty. Next year, we will probably be down one, possibly two. We're doing away with AP Lit, Spanish Lit, excuse me. We're going to focus more on the Spanish language, and we'll probably bring the AP Lit back. But it's very important to point out, even though we're not offering a class, if a student is strong enough in AP Spanish, the language, they're more than welcome to take the AP tests in Lit. The AP Lit.
Okay. And then, I am always curious, but you don't have to talk about, you know, the number of kids who do or don't take the exam. It's like putting all this effort, and then they may not take the AP exam, and that's always of concern.
Very good question. We try to make it mandatory for every kid that takes the course, they take it. I will say this, if someone doesn't take it, it's not because of financial assistance or anything. Students pay ninety dollars for the exam. It's, it's a decrease or a reduction, if you are free, or reduced lunch. And then if a student, just for whatever reason, is experiencing some hardship, we have, we work with organizations, our teams of needs, other ways that we try to support the students. We do not want the financial piece to be a barrier in students taking that exam.
I appreciate that. I did have a couple more, but if other people want to go, all right, I'll just get moving on with. And I always say this, so you probably don't want me to say, but the engagement of the kids who fall through the cracks. You know, we've got the kids who are high achievers, and then we have the kids that are really struggling with the, and getting the MCAS support, and, you know, those other things that are in our priority groups, right? Or not priority groups, what do we call them?
Subgroups?
Or subgroups, thank you. And so I'm always curious, like, what are we doing to help our kids who just aren't as engaged as we need them to be? I know you do a lot. I know there's been great growth, and there's a lot of push around MCAS and high-scale testing support. But what about the kids who sort of fall between those groups that we pay attention to? How do we get better with those groups? Or how do we look at those groups and engage them more? How many kids are in clubs and in sports?
Three hundred and sixty-nine are in clubs. The sports, I can't tell you right now, I just spoke with Mr. Traster. Crew has gone up, rugby has gone up in terms of participation for the spring, but those numbers are not necessarily finalized. So we have a lot of students that engage in a lot of activities. Keep in mind, there's a lot of kids that engage in activities outside of school, that are either community-based or in town-based. And so we're trying to inspire as many kids as we can to get involved. And then there are a lot of kids that access the Homework Club after school, that may not participate in a club or activity, but they're here, they're working with. Matter of fact, I was, I was, I'm embarrassed to say this to you, the dedication of some of these students, like, walking around about one o'clock today during our professional development, not only did we have one of the kids from the robotics team in the building working on the robotics, he's in here with a couple of other students, showing them what they were doing. So again, students are engaged, there are many entry points, but you're absolutely right. There are some kids that we want to make sure that we really kind of give them that extra push for them to get involved.
I just also want to say, that's one of the functions, too, of having the advisory program.
Yes.
Because that is one of the things where, one of the initiatives that we have, where every teacher has an advisory, advisory group, and so they rotate through the students, having individual conversations with the students, talking about their goals and what, what they're involved in, what they want to do, what they want to do this summer, what they want to do after high school, et cetera. So that's, that's something that we want to develop even more. We, they're required to meet with the students four to five times a year. So that's somebody in addition to the guidance counselor, so that's one way that we, we hit every single student, not just the low achievers or the high achievers, but we get the whole middle, too.
Just one more question on that. We have a half of an adjustment counselor, is that correct?
Excuse me?
We have a half of an adjustment counselor, is that correct?
No, we have two adjustment counselors, two full-time adjustment counselors.
Oh, 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 two full-time and then one half.
So we have Kathy Sullivan, who's a full-time adjustment counselor. Julia Sullivan, who's a .5, and Mr. Carino is a .5 adjustment counselor, .5 guidance counselor.
Thank you.
But I do want to get back to your comment about what else you do. We meet every Thursday with our leadership group, and we're talking right now with the department heads to really focus in on the teachers. Let's identify kids who are maybe struggling, whether it be academically, or not even just struggling. You see a dip in it, academically, socially, emotionally. So we do a lot with that, and I really need to put emphasis on, the person that really has a good pulse of the building is Nurse Gibbons as well. She does it from food service. Jackie Morgan does a great job notifying us if kids aren't eating, giving us feedback. So there's a lot of stakeholders that are really keeping an eye on the students, and that includes Steve Traster, who, who gives me a heads up. In fact, called me tonight at five o'clock to give me a heads up on students. So there are a lot of people that are keeping an eye on the students.
Thank you.
Mr. Walker?
Well, my compliments, first of all, to the site council. That's, you know, it, I, I think it's really helpful to take a step back and look at all of what's going on at the high school. It is pretty impressive. And not only is there activity, but we're excelling academically, we're excelling in sports, we're excelling in music and the arts. So it, it's a, it's a pretty impressive picture. And my compliments to all of you, and Mr. Jett, Ms. Cruiser, thanks for accepting these roles. You make a pretty impressive team. I think the questions that I have go back to some of the, the MCAS data and SAT data. If, if you know, with, where does the combined score place us percentile-wise in terms of other schools across the state?
If I, if I understa- Sorry. If I understand your question correctly, where does our combined scores in terms of ELA, math or biology?
SAT.
Oh, you said SAT?
Yeah.
I think I, I gave it. I didn't do the, the combined overall.
So the-
I could get that to you.
Right. Combined score fifteen forty-nine, what percentile would that place us in?
I could get that.
Okay, great. On MCAS, the, with the African-American subgroup, the sample size for ELA and math in 2012 was fifty-two, but for biology, it was forty-five.
Because it's a different grade level. Biology is ninth grade.
Okay.
So that's the number of students in the subgroup.
Okay.
I believe there's a, there might be a typo in the top of your sheet. It says grade ten, it should say grade nine.
Okay.
On the bio.
Yeah. And further back, I was interested in the, the, some of the student-led activities under respect for human differences. Michelle, could you say a little more about the student-led forum? They talk about school culture and human differences.
I, I could talk a little bit about it, and maybe, Betty, it originated out of the Diversity Committee. We had a young, two young students, Maya Jean and Trey, I apologize, I believe it's Trey Harrison. They initiated, and they wanted to talk about the culture and checking the pulse of the building in terms of our human difference and respect, not only from social, but how they perceive it, what was their perception of how they were received in the classroom, by their teachers, by their peers. And so it was more along the lines, they wanted to do it by themselves, and then they report back to the adults, because they felt as though if the adults were in the building, it would kind of control some of the conversation. And I thought it was great. They talked everything about from gender issues to sexuality, to academic achievement, to how can we find ways on motivating more students, particularly of color? And how do you bridge that gap? And how do you support different organizations, whether it's diversity, whether it's a sport, whether, any club, whether it's music, how do you get more involvement in all of these different activities? So it was pretty much student-led. I couldn't tell you all of the discussion in there, I could just share with you what they reported back to us. And so there was areas in which they felt as though we could improve, particularly in student achievement, which we think that we get that. But I also think it was important to note that there was a perception issue held by students of color as well, that they wanted other students of color, how could we put pressure on our peers to help them perform better?
And that last question, Ms. Padera has a number of good ideas from time to time, but we, we talked, a few months ago, we were having a discussion about drug abuse, underage drinking, and Ms. Padera suggested that a, a more robust peer counseling program might be a useful undertaking. Any, any work on that or any thought about that? Because I, I was really excited about that idea.
That is, we met with Dr. Knight on March 14th. That was one of the initiatives to talk about that. We plan to put a document in, in, hopefully in the student handbook with the approval of the school committee, or we're trying to do it before the prom, I'm just waiting for the letter from Dr. Knight, that kind of gives parents some information, and then you go onto a website. You could initiate and watch a fifteen-minute video, and then you do a semi-quiz to make sure that parents and students alike understand the, the dangers of substance abuse in addiction, and trying to take a more proactive approach. We're trying to find ways to insert that into our, more so in our health curriculum and make that a little more robust. And then it's having conversations with students on a regular basis and providing literature access, or organizations to come in and do presentations for us as well.
But I'm, I'm even more excited about an idea where students, peers talk to them about those issues.
I just want to also add that we did apply for a grant to work with Karen, which does specialize in that area. And with the idea of training our student leaders that we have to work with their peers in that area. But we, we haven't heard back yet, so we're hoping that that will work out. I also want to add on the diversity aspect, too, with talking about human differences. Yearly, we have the student leaders go and work with their peers during advisory period to do discussions surrounding human differences. The teachers are asked to stand like right outside the classrooms, so they're not in there, so they can, they can have an open discussion with the other, the students in the room, but that's a yearly occurrence that we have, in addition to what the Diversity Committee does.
Okay. Just to close, even if we don't get the grant, if there's anything I can do or we can do to expand the use of peer counselors, I, I would really like to see that happen.
Ms. Padera?
Yeah, I think we did talk about a little, in health and wellness, you can correct me if I'm wrong, community members, Kristen Bagley-Jones. We did talk a little bit about the peer counselors being used in advisory period, but also going to the eighth grade, right? Okay. So I, we're going to move on that one way or the other. They were going to go talk to the eighth graders. I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about that?
That was actually part of the grant, that we were trying to get the training for the student leaders to go down to grade eight. That was the first part of it, and then we were going to try to spread it to the high school also. But we would like to do it regardless if we get the grant or not. We just have to figure out a way to make it work, but that, that is the plan.
I might have some other ideas for training if that grant falls through, so.
Wonderful.
If you have ideas for the training, that is huge. I think it's important to put peers in front of their peers and to do it in a respectful way, but in a very productive way.
Okay. So that was, I just wanted to follow up on that, but I do have a couple of questions. First of all, great work on the presentation. One of the last things you said, I think is so important in working as a team in the high school, to really keep an eye on all students and using the athletic director and the nurse and food service directors, as well as guidance counselors. Guidance counselors don't catch everything, you know, but all the people, you know, kids reach out to different people, and they should feel comfortable doing that. So working as a team to keep an eye on all kids is, is really important. And I've talked about this before, but I think every student should participate in at least one club or activity, especially freshman year. I'd love to even see it mandatory for one, one activity, one club, even if we could make it, you know, free for that first club and freshman year and, or first sport would be, you know, a fantastic way to, to move forward. I just think that once kids do an activity, I think they're likely to do more. And we have so many great activities in sports, that there's got to be something for them. And if we can kind of push them in that direction a little harder, I think that they'll be more successful throughout the years. So that was just one comment I wanted to make. But I have a question about the, the SATs. I think it's just phenomenal that a hundred percent of our students are taking them. I'm just looking forward to wondering how many, what's the average time? How many times are they taking them? Because from my experience, if you take it once, you know, it's usually almost like a practice, getting used to it. I mean, not all students are practice, taking practice tests and preparing for them. They just walk in and take them. And so even encouraging them to take it at least twice, they'll generally do better the second time, almost, you know, most students do. So, you know, just something to look at for the future. And then the AP courses, you talked a little bit about this, and I think that's, you know, we have a great number of students in them, and you have an AP Information Night. Do students have to qualify to take the AP exams? Do they just, anybody that's open to anybody? As I understand, that's kind of how it's done, or do you encourage them one way or the other?
It is open enrollment, so as long as the student takes their prerequisite course or has done the, completed the prerequisite materials, they can participate in the course. We yearly ask the teachers to please have individual conversations with students who- We yearly ask the teachers to please have individual conversations with students who would do well in the course, even if they originally might not, you know, let's say they don't want to take AP statistics. We ask the math teachers, please have a conversation with any student who would benefit from taking it and try to work out some way to fit it in their schedule. So we encourage that at the time when we do course recommendations. So that already occurred the end of January, beginning of February. And then we also turn to the guidance counselors to also have that conversation with those students. And it's done every year, so we try to push as many students into the AP classes as possible.
And I think it's important to say within reason. Obviously, you don't want to stretch a student too far and have that student completely burn him or herself out or flat out give up. We just don't want that. We want to make sure that they're capable of doing it.
Now, if you have too many students that sign up for a particular class, I mean, I don't even know if that happens that often, but if you have too many students, do you go to? No, you make room, okay. And then, so, there was one, so the, all right, sorry, there's no failures. I was just curious about the Naviance college planning. What, can you talk a little bit more about that? What is that?
It's a program that, when the students come in freshman year, they are, the guidance counselor leads them through signing up for Naviance. Communication goes home to parents about scholarship opportunities, about where their student should be in the planning process. And it starts in grade nine. Every year, they concentrate on a different area of Naviance. So in grade nine, it might be a learning inventory. In grade ten, it might be resume building. There are different...
Careers.
Careers. There's the different aspects to it, so they can concentrate on different parts of it in ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade. There's a curriculum that the guidance counselor leads them through, and it helps them navigate through all the different pieces that they have to be aware of before they get out of high school. And in addition to that, when they get down to junior and senior year, you can apply through, to colleges through the Naviance program. So what happens is the teachers get a notice from the students through Naviance, where alerted that Johnny Smith needs a recommendation, has asked for a recommendation. The teachers do the recommendations and upload it on there, and we just hit send, and it goes directly to the colleges.
Same thing with transcripts.
Transcripts, everything.
That is nice.
Can I just add to the Naviance thing? Is that okay? It's also where it plots, when you're a child, a student, you put in where your SAT scores, your GPA, and it tells you on a quadrant where you are. It's a fabulous, fabulous tool.
Also, the guidance counselors use it to send messages home to parents.
That's great.
All the time, so.
That's phenomenal. And then on that same page, the calculus project proposal, I read in great interest about that earlier, and so I just wanted to know how it went and...
I spoke with Dr. Mims about maybe a week and a half ago. Because of what's going on with the government right now, the National Science Foundation has not necessarily held to the schedule in terms of notifying, because obviously there's money involved. It's an eight-million-dollar grant. As previously stated, it's a partnership between Newton North, Newton South, Brookline, Milton High School, and then four schools in New York. And I apologize, I don't know the four schools in New York off the top of my head. But again, that is a program that will, hopefully, if we get the grant, start for students in grade seven, provide free tutoring after school, with professional development for our teachers, supports for the students. And when I say supports, it's not remedial supports, it's pre-teaching. Getting the kids ready for the previous, for the following year, to help them with those skills, and they get that with the premise that every single one of the students to take, participate in that program will eventually graduate, successfully complete a calculus course and have the opportunity to move into AP courses. And it's, calculus program is for students of color to really try to push them forward. But my hope and my theory behind it, the skills that are learned in there can be replicated across the board for all students. So again, it's, we're in a waiting game right now. Dr. Mims, I just said it to math department head Courtney Walsh the other day. He did say he felt badly about it, and he offered potential slots, and he's going to get back to me, because they already have the program in Brookline, potential slots. We had students that were looking to push that way. The difference would be the transportation getting to Brookline, and it would be a car sharing rate now. But my hope is we hear back from the National Science Foundation pretty soon. And I do want to just make note or make a comment on what are people doing or how are we supporting students in the middle? It often goes untold. There are a lot of teachers, and I think it was evident by the number of teachers. We had forty teachers at one game. We had twenty teachers at another. When I think kids, when students see their faculty and staff at these events, supporting, whether it's music, whether it's wrestling, or drama, or the faculty show, they feel a different connection with them, and I think that's great. You have a teacher like a Steve Tott, who's here at six o'clock, six-thirty in the morning, where you have students that I probably wouldn't have thought would have come in very early, but they're there working, they're reading, they're getting support. We have teachers who are here as late as five o'clock with students working with them. So there's a lot of great things, and part of that has to do with the support that the teachers get from the community. It's how they feel about their job and the students that they're teaching, and in return, the students feel comfortable reaching out to them.
Yeah, I was, I'm glad you brought that up, because that was my last comment. Just, it's not that mentioned in here, but the faculty talent show was incredible. And I don't even know all those teachers, but it was just fantastic. I have, I would, you didn't charge enough, because it was one of the funniest things I've ever seen, and to have that many teachers there supporting it, and to have them up there looking like they were having the time of their life. And I don't think they could fake it that well. They were having the time of their life. And, you know, Mr. Jett, if you're not throwing your back out in the Harlem Shake, you're not doing it right. Great job, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I've been listening to site council reports for several years now, and this is by far the best picture of Milton High School that has ever been presented. And as a real proponent of site councils and the great work that you do, I guess my major question is, how do you communicate? Like, I would love this to be posted. I would love this to be sent home. I would, I think this and the story that you've told is just the story that all of Milton should hear about. And I don't know whether that's like a special show on cable or something, but it really is giving the full picture of Milton High School, not only the academic, but also the balance of everything else that everyone here does. And whatever way we can communicate, not only to parents, because maybe parents are only seeing a little bit of what happens at Milton High School. You guys have just done a tremendous presentation on the big picture, and I think we just need to somehow communicate that broader than a school committee meeting. And I'm not sure what the vehicle is. I don't necessarily have a suggestion, but thank you for all the work you do. I think this just speaks volumes.
Thank you.
I agree, Member Kelly, and it's really important for the community to understand, and I think that we lose perspective once in a while, that we have a flagship high school that has over ninety percent of its students in advanced or proficient in both ELA and math, climbing and science, increased AP course offerings, doubling the amount of students taking AP classes, and all this SAT information with a hundred percent of the students taking SAT, all the clubs, the activities, sports, every hook we can try to imagine that we can pull students in. So a high-achieving school with a climate, the school is clean, it's positive, the teachers are great. And the teachers, you know, we've had leadership change in three years, and the teachers carry the school day in and day out with what Mr. Jett describes as the dedication to their students and the administrative support and leadership. So as a resident of Milton and as a taxpayer of Milton and as a parent of children, we really want to be able to show off that this is a place that we should be very, very proud of, and, because it does represent what you want in a high school for your child. So it is a success story, it continues to be, and I appreciate you showing it off. And we do need to take this story a little more public, and it would be very nice to. So thank you for all your support.
For sure.
I'm going to be brief, because so many wonderful things have been said, but this was such a terrifically thorough presentation, and I thank you for the time and effort that went into that and the work that you all do as a committee. I just want to talk very quickly about the math scores on the MCAS, because to have sixty-three percent students score in advanced is, like, that should be shouted from the top of Milton High School. And that data is evident before your curriculum changes even really go into effect. Isn't that true? So we haven't yet seen the greatness that's to come with the whole new aligned math curriculum that you're rolling out. So I just can't say enough wonderful things about that accomplishment. It is huge. And not, I won't repeat what other people have already said, but I do want to talk about the community partnerships that you've developed, because that's the most extensive list that I've ever seen. And it's really quite impressive with all of the outreach that you have. And one of, really, my favorites is the school-to-career partnership, because I see so many kids that come out of college after four years, and they have no idea what they want to be when they grow up, you know? And this is an opportunity for kids to get a taste, just a flavor of opportunities that are out there for them. So the more that you can do to support that, I just think it's very, very exciting. Your communication has been outstanding. It improves every week. I so look forward, when I see Milton High happening, to come up in my email to see what it's going to be today. And just finally, the new initiatives that you have as a school site council, I think when I was in the school site council, probably about ten years ago, we took up dress code. So that was probably the last time it was visited. Good that you're doing it again. And in terms of technology, you have a great book that I could recommend to you. It's called Inevitable.
Inevitable?
Inevitable. It's about mass customized learning, and it's phenomenal when you look in at what kids are doing and using today in terms of technology, so, thank you.
Superintendent.
I think that Mrs. Kelly may be one of the first people who served on a site council, and your remarks starting out when you were presenting, I think that you would be hard-pressed across the state to find schools, and tonight you epitomized who the site council is a part of the culture of the school. And so we've watched the evolution of site councils. Mrs. Kelly, again, not to patronize you, but you really pushed over the years for the site council to present, to be part of that site council plan. And it made me, when Mrs. Kelly said of all the site councils that she's seen and witnessed the evolution of, to, for you, Ms. Quealy, to say that you'd come back six years in a row, for Mr. Zulus to volunteer as a community member, and we see you in the hallways coming to the site councils. Betty White, you have served over the years on various site councils. Again, to see the students going into that room morning and afternoon, to know that your time is of value. And so this is really important. Besides it being a perfect picture of Milton High, it makes you step back, and again, sharing it with the staff, looking at every aspect from peer, communication, to academics, to athletics. So you're to be complimented. And to think that all the time that you put into this is of value, it's of value self-reflection for yourself, a roadmap, and then the public should know, out of your work comes the plan for the school. And it's an umbrella of the district schools that the site council creates. Mr. Jett and Michelle Cruiser work collaboratively with the other administrators so that all six schools are in sync. But your time was well-spent, and you're to be congratulated. And when Ms. Sheridan mentioned the math, did I hear Ms. Cruiser giggle over there? I said, John, she's so proud. So to, just like to bring a system or bring a school, you brought the math department to that place, and then you set your child off to another director, so you're to be complimented. But to all of you, I really, really appreciate, and again, we've seen a lot of site councils over the years, and we have seen the development of site councils, that every minute that you've put into it has really brought about improvement in Milton High. Congratulations, and thank you.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
One quick little thing. I just was reminded in looking at this, what was it, only five students in the needs improvement out of, what, over two hundred, two seventy?
Two thirty-four, I believe it was.
Two thirty-four, to be exact. So that's pretty amazing. And then I love the idea of taking it on the road, you know, what you guys are doing, and a couple of things that I think you could add to it to expand on what you already do, not to do more, but community service, you could talk about, the service learning projects with...
You would be pleased to know that the community service stuff has been moved to the front of the Milton High School webpage, how they can access it, what are some of the things, the information we need to get that information to our students? That is now on the front of the headline.
But in terms of sharing this kind of thing, I think that it's a really strong part of the program and why we do it and what the kids do, and it fits into the school careers thing, so it gives them, anyway. Best buddies, you could talk more about best buddies, you could talk more about the peer leaders, which we talked about a little bit, but they came from this peer conflict thing, as Ms. Beach explained, and went into, evolved into the student leaders. So that it's been here already, the peer conflicts, but it's the student leaders are out there talking. And then the bullying stuff that you guys did that was ahead of the curve, and I believe we still have the bullying hotline, correct?
Yep.
So, but we were ahead of the curve on that. All the lists of the clubs and sports, which we often get, but it's not part of this, and it should be. The mentors that we have, the student government activities, more on Naviance, more on the junior parent guidance meetings, which was a new thing this year, which was, I just had mine, it was fabulous. The advisory, I just think in addition to all of this, you're also doing all this, and I'm sure I forgot some other things, but as a parent who isn't, if you're not at the high school or community member, you wouldn't know about all these things. And I think that they're also another layer of richness in the high school that you could get some credit for and should be part of your dog and pony show.
And so to that point, and the last thing that we'll say from our end, and we answer questions, we were talking about that, because for our grade-eight information night in the fall, we did a Milton High School highlights, and we did it for the first two months. And after further discussions, we've talked about, just recently, we should revitalize that and keep it month by month and just have a running calendar that's going on the line, highlights for the month. To your point, so many wonderful things are going on today. I think Kathy Quillian, Michelle Cruzer's could talk. We did our announcement. We had Tom Shaw, who's two-time coach of the year. We just had Eileen Mullin, who was recognized for early education award. So there's so many things that we could probably go on and on, and to your point, you're absolutely right. So as opposed to us bringing it here all the time, people could access it even if they don't come into your community. You have people who are looking to move, and some people, obviously, a lot of people move because of the school system, and that's another lens that provides them into what's going on at the high school.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll schedule you for two nights next week.
Mary, when you said about site council, I said that's a long time. We'd like to invite to the table our town's consolidated facilities director, William Ritchie, Bill Ritzy, and operations manager, Robert Mayhew, Bob Mayhew. Would you join us at the table? Thank you. I know the two of you started early morning. So every year, as entree, we have a facilities update to the school committee and the community on the work that's being done and the needs of our facilities.
It's been about a year, then when I first came here and had some challenges, but I'm excited, and I take the pride that you people have in the school, and you can see it through the teachers and the principals. It's just exciting and nice to work for a town like Milton. Appreciate it's even going to be better.
You've been a wonderful addition to the Milton Public School and the town staff.
Thank you. You guys have all been very, very helpful with the learning curve. But briefly, I guess, I just start. Some of the, the summer program to get ahead of the curve, we're just in springtime now, and the snow's just off the ground, but I'm meeting with three of the principals next week for a whole list of what we can do as far as painting and getting ahead of the curve as far as classrooms, hallways, boyers, all the projects they want to do. Most of it, some of it's going to be a wish list, because I, we do have to spread it out with all the other schools. But last year, I think the custodians did an excellent job. We were clean, we were fast, we were painted, and I want to even do better this year, so hopefully it'll all show.
I appreciate the facilities department during those snowstorms, the time that you put in the planning. put in the planning, the DPW for the town of Milton. I would have had to bring that up at another time, but...
They did great and Jason and his crew. I mean, the customers, I can't say enough about how much pride that they take in the building and they, it really shows. They really try to kill themselves to get the place open on time and couldn't have done it without any of them. Just started.
So again, we want to welcome Bill Ritchie and Bob Mayhew. Again, Bill Ritchie is our consolidated facilities director for the town and Bob Mayhew remembered that one year ago he was appointed operations manager. So welcome tonight for your annual update on facilities.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
I was just actually joking with Lynda Lee earlier, you know, that she took all the wind out of my sail last week once he kind of gave the presentation, you mean? So now I had to wing it, you know?
Sorry.
But whatever, just, you know. So yeah, so basically what I did, I put some, you know, obviously that was a great presentation ahead of me. So, you know, I tried to make mine a little more funner, just some pictures. But department, department has been going now for roughly about a year and a half. In July, it'll be my second year, time flies.
Yeah, it's fun.
And then in Milton for like roughly 13 years as the director of facilities for schools and then transferred over. It's a great department and we're still new. We're, you know, we're still struggling with funding and, you know, how we fit in, how the, you know, best to fit in with the DPW and the PAC. But I think we're really moving good. I had a great conversation with Dave Purdeos today about the PAC. So we're slowly, you know, trying to go into different departments and not to be intimidated by anyone and just trying to help, you know, hear support. So I'll kind of go, I'll go through some slides. If you have some questions, you can... And some of these slides may be done, but you know, it's pretty much what the department is and I have some, so basically we started out, you know, the gross square footage of the consolidated facilities is about 900,000. We have roughly overseeing 22 buildings. The estimated value of all the buildings and land is about 263 million. Total staff for schools and consolidated facilities is about 34, seven on the consolidated facility side, 27 on the custodial and maintenance side. We service in roughly about 30, 25 vendors. Last year when I started a year and a half, we had about 37 vendors. And we have one cleaning contract that supplies the cleaning contractor that does town hall maintenance and the library senior center. One of the notes you don't have here is where do I want to see the department go? If money is available in the next few years, I'd love to see another full-time equivalent painter slash carpenter to work the off-schedule shift, 2:30, 10:30, because there's 700,000 square feet of space in the school. We could, we could hire two painters painting every single night and when they finish it once, they'd be starting all over again. That's how much wall space there is. So that may be something down the line. In the meantime, we do a lot in the house. Second slide, come and goes to consolidated facilities. We want to continue to evaluate and consolidate vendors, contracts, efficiency, cost savings. Continue to reduce energy consumption for all cost savings. Recommend energy grants to all school and town buildings. Continue to utilize the in-house staffs in order to program and maintain our sophisticated electrical, plumbing, heating, ventilation systems, as well as ongoing roofing, painting, carpentry, and grounds maintenance. I'm talking too fast, Tommy, I talk a lot. Facilities in-house cost-saving projects. What the facilities department does today is we do a lot of roofing projects, painting projects. We did a Glover classroom conversion early last year when we...
Excuse me, could you just change the slide so people at home can see?
I'm sorry, yeah. I'm going to grab that and as I finish, you can flip it. I'm back there. We do security grades, we repair the heating and ventilation systems and programming. We just finished some park department upgrades, plumbing repairs, consolidation of materials and supplies, subcontract for vendor consolidation. We do tile in-house carpet renovation repair, equipment repair, snow blowers, lawn mowers, cleaning equipment, life safety upgrades, repairs and maintenance. When I had some time a little earlier, I just kind of looked at this because everyone always asks, what is the value of consolidated facilities? So I took a little stab at some of the things. Two years ago, we did a white knight roofing project. If we were to scrub out that project to a vendor, it would have been $170,000. We did it in-house for roughly $35,000, saving, you know, saving all kind of money. And even if we had hired somebody to do the coatings, we still would have saved $20,000 for them to do the coatings. This year alone with one of our maintenance men, Dave Hawes, he's a professional roofer, we've already done about $12,000 worth of repairs in-house for free. So that's the value of some of the staff that we have. Painting projects, about $12,000. The Glover classroom conversion would have cost about $10,000. We did it in-house for about $2,000 bucks. And we did it on the time strand. That was like a two-week project. We had to cut down the wall and open it to want to be classroom. Security upgrade, about $4,000. Heating, ventilation repair and program. I can't say enough about Jim Egan. I think Jim Egan to me is like the backbone of this department. I think since he's been here, his salary may be $75,000. He spends anywhere, he saves $80,000 right off the bat. And then he just saves another $50,000 in programing all our systems so they come on and is efficient. So he is making time and a half on his salary. So that's great people and that's the value of having skilled, qualified people in-house versus subbing up the work. Plumbing repairs, $13,000. Consolidated materials supply so fast as we started about $7,500. Some contract, some contract vendor consolidation, about $15,000. We're in the process right now. Three years ago, we had seven elevator vendors. We're down to three and I think by the end of the year we'll have one, saving about $15,000 Bob and his, you know, Bob is a great tile and repair guy, so he's training the staff how to do it. We saved to date about $4,000. And equipment repair, snow blowers and lawnmower, equipment repair in-house, about $7,000. Life safety upgrades, $8,000. So these are all the things that we've been doing that we would have had a sub out three or four years ago. It's enormous.
The rug for the hearing impaired classroom, some special needs, you know, dividers and, you know, to accommodate the special needs and the hearing impaired ones in the classroom. Now the guys can all install tile in-house. They can do the VCT, ceramic, you know? So their skillset's getting a lot deeper and a lot better.
So obviously, you know that we, a few years ago, we integrated the school do program for the consolidated facilities. It's been existing for about seven years because we started it out on the rental side and I took it and added another caveat to it. And this is a snapshot of where we're at today. Since we started about a year ago, we're up to about 1,600 completed work orders and that pie chart represents all the red of the pie chart is all the ones that are closed out and the other green ones are kind of work in progress. So we're tracking everything. I'm hoping within another year that we should be able to look back and start putting dollars to all the different departments that we're working at. Just to, you know, just so we can tell the public that this is, we're spending some money, but it's a win-win, you mean? So it's a nice system. Next slide is consolidated facilities workload. These are some of the skilled things that we do. We do myrmidons, inspections for all schools and town buildings. We just finished it, it's all completed and compliant. We work with the billing department. We inspect all the schools and town buildings. It's a lengthy process. We go through all the violations and we have to correct them, life safety, light bulbs, how people store supplies up high and making all those corrections, doors that don't work. They're all pretty much, pretty much, you know...
Next couple of weeks.
Yeah, all complete and corrected. Boiler inspections every year, it's pretty detailed, complete and compliant. Fire alarm, smigler systems, quality inspection, complete and compliant. Our elevators and generators inspections, complete and compliant. Security upgrades, phase one, card access for the schools. That's an ongoing project. I want to thank the billing committee for being generous, Glenn and you and your crew for funding the money for the department to do that. So we're going to hopefully be starting that project about three weeks from now, anticipating about 21 card devices on the outside of the buildings. And the next one is the BDA, the bidirectional tenant for the schools. That project is ongoing. We're about a week and a half out to have this whole building completed. So it was installed a tenant inside the building so the police and the fire will have better access. We are using our licensed electrician in-house, a masked electrician. For the Pierce and for the middle school, it's about a $50,000 savings. His salary's $60,000. This project alone, plus the project below, the, let's go, $8,000, that is almost his salary for three months' work. That's the win-win of having people in-house that are skilled. It's a no-brainer.
And this type of wiring has its own challenges with it. I mean, it's trying to get that around the life safety issues, the things through the ceilings and it just doesn't bend like regular...
Chief, I love my props. This is pretty much, this is the cable that actually is the antenna going through the building, but it's really tied and it goes from here, it goes to Blue Hills and back to the police department and that's how you're going to get the, yeah, so it's, I never knew prior to when I said, when Chief was asking me, "Bill, can you do this in-house?" "Sure, for you I can do it," you know? I didn't know how hot it was to run this cable because you can't bend this cable around the walls.
And you can't disrupt other frequencies and everything, yeah?
So it's pretty challenging. Major projects, that's one. We're working on, we just finished a big generator project, exterior ductwork project, Pierce Middle School field renovations, high school, high school bookfields replacement and security upgrades to school buildings. These are some of the slides. That's the new generator that we put on the town. That will supply about 85% of all the energy in that building. A few years ago, we had some major power losses, so we couldn't communicate with them. We couldn't do payroll. So that's a good thing for everybody. Benefits the town hall, but it also benefits the scooter pop and everyone there.
The DPW's computer also as far as snow and getting their weather...
And also in that building...
Can you move the mic closer so people can hear? I'm sorry.
It also applies all the phones for the police and fire and also the internet. So it's real, it's a real important thing that we got done this year and that's all done capital money. The next slide was the, a smaller generator in the MPAC studio and that will supply all the power for the MPAC studio, but also there's another set of wires in there that does the phones for the DPW, town hall and the police. So these are all really important things. I'm actually working with Jim Scroyd to see if I can hook up our phone system back to this generator at Pierce. So I'm going to try that within the next couple of weeks to see if we can accomplish that. And obviously the famous, the ductwork project for the schools, I tell you, I thank God for the taxpayers of Milton and for giving us the money to do this ductwork over because this project's $680,000 for high school. In the last two years, we did Pierce and Glover for another $175,000. So, and this is the condition of the ductwork. I actually brought a few, Pete, and this is, this is the old ductwork that was up there. And I always like to tell people, because everyone says, "Bill, why did you have to do it over?" Well, what happens with this ductwork is that you figure five feet of snow on top of this insulation, it just crushes it. And then the seam breaks, water gets into it, becomes a big wick and within no lime, it just starts falling down. And the new high-tech insulation that I spent a lot of time with DRA trying to analyze, it's rigid board insulation, can't crush it. It's a high-tech coating. They're telling me it's going to last minimum of 10 years without doing too much work in. And obviously with our in-house roofer, Dave is going to be doing yearly inspections, patching it back, make sure, I'm hoping to get 15 years out of it. It's not a lifetime project, but we can try to get 15 years versus seven years. And also when it's all completed, we should be saving money on energy. Another good thing. That's the next slide, Bob, you get that? And that's another picture of the ductwork, phase one. And then the next, that's the complete, that's, we're doing two phases here. So we just finished, we finished the front all the way back to back. We're jumping up to here and then all the back roof. Hopefully by the end of June, we'll be off this roof, but that's what the picture...
Good view of the solar panels.
Huh?
Good view of the solar panels.
Oh, your solar panels, yeah. I have some other slides for them, but I didn't bring them tonight. And this just shows you the detail of, you know, of the ductwork. It all, it looks pretty, but it's pretty hard to cut the stuff and make it all conform. So it's a real skill, it's a real art. And the last picture, Bob. People say, "Bill, what are you doing up there?" I'm saluting. The next, the next picture is a, it's a Google Earth looking at the Pierce Middle School. This was the project that the park department and school department all worked together. You know, so Dave and all his crew, they, you know, they subbed it all out. And that's the finished project. As of today, the fence is down. It looks a little yellow right now, but that's Kentucky bluegrass. Hopefully within a couple of years, the tow downs that will overseed it and the grass will get a little bit greener. But it was a great project in-house. Now we're all going to work together. This is how we're slowly all trying to work together, you mean? And the next project is the Brooks Field that we went out to bid. We estimated this project could be about between $450,000 and half a million. It came in at $451,000. So we're hoping we're going to start this project in June. I think I can openly say that the Copeland Foundation has, gave us a grant of roughly about $300,000, maybe a little less, maybe $301,500 to pay for the turf. And then capital committee in May, hopefully they'll vote for a hundred in the school department and pay the rest. But we're hoping to have this field done and this next picture will kind of show it. This is a picture I took from Matt Gillis. That is the old turf on the left side and that's what the new turf looks like. That's how much it's kind of went down over the years. So we are really ready. We played multiple sports on this, you know, six different sports. I'm surprised that we got as many years out of it as we did. But the new turf is, you know, that was one of the first, Northeast turf is one of the first tefs that we actually put in, but hopefully we can get 12 to 15 years versus 11 years. But it's, you know, it's all about maintenance, trying to groom it and take care of it.
And so before you leave the turf, when the school building project was going on, part of the donation from the Copeland Family Foundation was the turf. And the work that was done by the individuals, Bill was part of that team that selected the company. When they came out, because of the initial quality purchase, we only have to spend the $500,000. Where if we had gone with another company, it would have been a million or a million five purchase. So again, you're supposed to get 10 years out of an artificial turf field. We pushed the life of the field and now we'll be able to start another decade or 12 years with, again, only the top layer has to be redone.
Yeah, yeah, what's the, yeah, the good thing back when we did this in 2001, when we picked all the vendors, we decided to go with a vendor, which was not really a tough decision back then because a lot of people were against it. Do not go with the E-layer. The E-layer is another piece of rubber that's below this. So when the, when that turf on the left side is that thin, if that E-layer wasn't there, we could not legally play football in that field because the impact would be like hitting concrete. So that E-layer has provided a few extra years. So we're going to rip this up, hopefully have minimal, you know, very minor repairs, patch it up again, put the new turf over it. If we didn't have that, it'd be about a million dollar field. So we saved, that was a great decision back then. Next slide, coming in ongoing energy conservation measures. We just recently completed an energy management upgrade to the high school in Pierce for the man-side in control ventilation. It was about, if we had scrubbed it out, it would have been a $75,000, $80,000 project. We've received about $40,000 in grant money. We're saving about $15,000 a year. So that's another great project we worked on. We also received a few months back, $20,000 in purchasing of new light bulbs for free and we're installing throughout the whole building. So we're going from a 32 watt fluorescent tube to 28 watt and we should save about $3,000 in that. Currently working on a third-party energy content. I'm still looking at some town hall buildings right now, going to come back and piggyback on some more school buildings. I'm always looking for money. That's what I really love. That's my passion is to go into boiler rooms and try to, but it's, you know, it's always hard trying to get money. It's tough in these times, but you know, we've done a lot. Indoor, outdoor lighting retrofits such as LEDs, interior parking lot light fixtures, looking at variable speed motors and boilers. Next slide also tells you that we do track energy because energy is a big thing today in the budget, you know what I mean? Our energy and utility budget is huge. So, but we track it since, we've been tracking it since 2009. 2013 was, you know, for year 13 versus 12 was a big difference. We had one of the mildest winters in almost 20 years. There's a couple of little, did anybody see like a big boo-boo on this one? It's not a boo-boo, I was waiting for a test question. But if you look down to December, how much it went up? It was 298%. What that was that, Nancy and I tracked this, we went back, we were only billed for eight days. And that's why it went up like crazy. So that's, you know, but I kind of threw it as a trick. See, people, you know, you put all these notes out there, is anyone even looking at the notes? But that's, you know, but you know, I think we're doing good. We're really tracking energy.
The schools have engaged in a contract to have solar panels offsite. And that, I think, is an opportunity for us to, again, get a little bit more savings. I'm wondering, I think the town department, or the town side perhaps had an opportunity to join on with that. Is that something that you've advised for or against? I'm just wondering where you're...
Yeah, on the town side, we have, we just had our first official department meeting with, you know, Emma Reed, New Town Administrator. But we have, we have a core team and we do, we do. So right now, that contract right now, I believe, is with the attorneys, so we're reviewing that. And superintendent, we talked about that today. I said, "Bill, what do you think about the offsite?" I love solar, I think it's a way of money. The only thing that, and I think it's a negative thing, but myself, if it was my money-making investment, the only thing that ever scares me is a long-term investment. When you're investing something for 20 years, ugh, you know, I mean, is there ever going to be another crazy type of energy that we can use? But historically, if you look down the line, the last 50, 40 years, there's nothing there. Looks like everything's constantly going up and up and up and up. I hope it goes true. I think it's a great opportunity for us to save money. The wind turbine is like 50/50 right now. It's, you mean, I, you know, I think we're, I would have been great to get the solar and get the wind turbine and, because I think, you know, everyone, usually, I talk to a lot of facilities guys who call me up and say, "How do you guys do it? You guys are doing this, you're doing that, you're doing this." And we're pretty aggressive. I mean, that's, you know, if you can sit back and just let it happen, we make it happen.
No, that's true. I appreciate that. The other thing that was mentioned, and I don't know when, was a long time ago, some cellphone companies came to us and asked if we wanted to put an antenna on top of the piers, I think at the time. And at that time, there were some health concerns, et cetera, and we basically said, "Well, we'll pass." Is that an opportunity that still exists for the schools? Because I think if we were perhaps to revisit that, perhaps the decision of the school committee might be different. It's at least worth revisiting. And is that something that you would take on? Or I'm not sure how, how we're working on these types of things.
Well, it's probably, I'd probably work closely with Bill Clark, who's the planning, you know what I mean? So he would bring people in and we obviously put in their, you know, you know, obviously, you always, there's pros and cons to anything. But, you know, if you're, and I'm not, and I'm not a health expert, but I'm pretty much, you know, I'm fairly green and, you know, you just want to look at it, you want to put it high enough so you can. But if you look at every kid today, every kid's got a cellphone, plenty of it is, you know, I just don't know. But, I mean, I think if there's opportunity to make money, I think we have to, we have to look at it. And we have to be conscious of people that are against it. We have to have the real facts. It's like anything, you gotta go out, get the facts, and kind of weigh out the cost of doing business. I mean, but you want to keep everybody safe.
Yep. And then just one thing, one of the ways, and I think that maybe you were the one who suggested it, was to go sort of classroom by classroom and see if there are refrigerators operating and other kinds of electric. And I know that there was a great push to basically remove all those. I'm just wondering if we're still maintaining our vigilance around that and whether there might be an opportunity to just revisit that whole topic and see if, that everybody's sort of abiding by those rules.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think we're still doing a good job. I think, you know, trying to manage, right now, it's almost 900,000 square feet. It's a lot of touring, but we have a lot of fire inspections every year. We have a lot of bill inspections and mine inspections. And I give myself and Bob an opportunity. And Bob knows the focus of things. And we go around, and we may not take it right then, but we make a note of it. And our job is to tell the principals, look, it's their job, not my job to tell a teacher to move it. But we try to find ways, you know, but you always have to busy, every year, there's this turnover and new teachers come. I mean, so...
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Ms. Sheridan.
So I'm the lucky person that gets to sit on the facilities committee with you all and hear about this work on a regular basis. So you've said a lot of great things about the work that you've done tonight, Bill, but you haven't talked about, you yourself have won several awards because of your work on the Green Schools Initiative and how important the safety of using safe materials around our children and our, you know, townwide now is to you. So I want to also just put that little plug in for you because I know it's something that you take great concern about and all of us benefit from your work in that. So thank you. And the first page that you had here talked about the square feet of the consolidated facilities. And I think I heard you say that we have 700,000 square feet in the schools alone.
Yeah.
And how many custodians do we have?
We have...
You have this townwide...
We have roughly about 680,000 square feet of school space. I mean, we have 25 custodians, full-time equivalents.
And do you remember by any chance what that number was when we, like, pre-construction?
Well, I've been here since 2000 and I heard, and I've seen the records prior to that. I think at one time, I believe there was 32 custodians managing 400,000 square feet of space.
Right. So I think that, you know, while we recognize all the contributions of so many people that make, that benefit the whole town in this consolidated facilities, we also need to lift up the custodians that are doing an amazing job with the number of staff that they have that's decreased and the amount of increased coverage that they have. But your leadership has been great and I so appreciate your insightfulness in finding ways for us to continually save. And I think that next time when we have our sign-up for committees, more people are going to want to be on facilities.
Yeah. No, no, well, I would look for that. Like I said, you know, now, you know, obviously being in the public, if there's people out there that are engineers, are environmentalists, you know, this is your time, you want to join a committee, I'd love to have you, you know what I mean? Because we can always use that expertise. We have some great people, but, you know, everyone gets busy and, but I'm, you know, Milton, just, you know, when I go through that, I think they call it the nosy book. And I look at all the different people, I'm always looking, saying, "I gotta call this guy." No, but that's how you get the people there, you know, there's a lot of experts out there. Great to have on the, yeah.
We should recognize those committee members, the community-wide.
Yeah, we have Joe Murphy, who was actually a licensed union electrician for many years and also an estimator. We have Rick Malmstrm, who was an energy engineer for the Dana Fire, I believe. John Kibbe, who I've actually met, I reacquainted, I've met him 27 years ago and he was dating a friend of mine. And we were talking one day and that's, he said, "Bill," he said, "you always look familiar." And I said, "So did you." And we finally hit it. But John, John used to be a chemical engineer, graduated from Northeastern, had a big job at Dow Chemical, became a civil engineer and environmental engineer. And now he works for, you know, a couple of utilities and a very brilliant guy. And...
All of those committee members just contribute a great amount to our meeting. So it's important to lift them up as well.
But it's a great, you know, it's a great department. And like I said, it's, you know, it's not about me, it's, I'm the last guy passing myself in the back. I love what I do and I'm passionate what I'm doing. I think it's a team effort now, you know, from Bob, the new custodians, the custodians. And yes, I mean, like I said, we have a lot of square footage. We have, you know, in the best will, we probably have another five custodians. But, you know, we all try to do the best we can, you know, so, but it just, you know...
Thank you.
Ms. Gormly.
I too would like to thank Bill Ritchie and Bob Mayhew. And I think for anyone just viewing in, Ms. Kelly referred to it, the town was very, very brave. They went out and visited other communities that had consolidated facilities. The town meeting had to endorse the idea. And the charge was that we have these buildings and they're the responsibility of the town to take care of. And so the Milton Public School custodians and Jason Shearer is here with us tonight. And Bob Mayhew and Bill Ritchie treat this property as if it was their own. And so I'm deeply appreciative. John Phelan can speak for himself, but after last summer, going through the consolidated facilities, we both said we had never seen so much work done in the Milton Public Schools over the summer. And that's a result of consolidated facilities. And to Ms. Kelly's point, again, a little aside, I said to Bill Ritchie, Bill Ritchie is out there and it's not often that I have to call him because his reporting skills and Bob Mayhew, I see every one of them every day. Either one of them, I see every single day. They walk through the office, they're only a telephone call away, they're in every one of our buildings. And huge for me is that they're visible to our principals and they're in and out of those buildings. And this consolidated facility has worked for the citizens and the taxpayers, for, as people say, school buildings are built for 50 years. In Milton, we build them for 100 years. And again...
Keep it for 150.
Right, over 100 years. And Mr. Winchester said, who is the chairperson of the school committee, to all of us, don't ever be connected with the legacy that these buildings weren't maintained. And we have accepted the school committee, the administration, the town, that challenge and they are keeping the buildings. And one other person that I think we have to recognize, Tony Cacciello was very brave. This was a citizen, a parent with a dream, and he wasn't going to stop. And when I looked at Bill, I thought tonight, we did interviews, community members, individuals from across New England. We, we had individuals across the country who were applying for the position. And Bill earned that position and you have proven that you were the right person to lead the department. So on behalf of the schools, huge is the responsibility of maintaining and keeping these buildings looking like the day that we walked into them new. So I'm very, very appreciative. And to our custodians, again, Jason Shearer is here today and it's our right to single someone out. Jason Shearer sets a tone that's second to none. He treats this high school like it was his own home, from outside to inside, and he expects nothing less from the people who work with him. And I am very, very appreciative. We are so proud, when anyone comes to Milton High, we never have to say, oh, we have to make sure that the building is pristine. It is. And Bill, I wanted to ask you in closing, just like the citizens went out to other communities who were involved in consolidated facilities at different levels, do you get calls about Milton's consolidated facilities?
All the time.
Do they come out and visit?
Well, I know, I'm, I belong to association, I'm acting, I used to be a board of directors. Now I'm in charge of all this, anybody who wants to be certified as a certified facilities. I go to this, and they always talk. I mean, and this, this lost a chat, this, people are nervous because, you know, you've been doing one thing for 25 years, now you change it. But I think for me, my success in this town is that I started out early and I'm a people person, I made a lot of friends, a lot of connections with the police chief, with the fire chief, with everyone. And it was such an easy, everyone trusted me. I have no agenda. I like to show up and I like to just make things happen and get things done. And I think that's, I'm an open book, you know what I mean? And I think, you know, some other, if you're hard, you really just have to open yourself up. And I'm trying to still win over the park department because the park department and the cemetery was still, but I think eventually we all can kind of work together.
Well, so, great. We're very appreciative. Congratulations and thank you both.
Well, thank you both.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback on one last thing that was said, I think a description of your opening couple slides with the money saved by the various different projects will make a good brief presentation around your article of town meeting to remind town meeting members that they made the right choice in funding this, funding this department. And then when you come back for that extra manpower in the next year or two, they need to remember that this is working and fund it.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Very briefly, just with happenings, we updated you that we had our assistant superintendent search. John Phelan and I served along with James Jet, Becky Padera, you were represented by Ms. Padera, Bill Ritchie, Jackie Morgan, and Steve Traister. We have a finalist and Mr. Walker and Ms. Kelly have agreed tomorrow night to join us for that second interview. We had our first round of interviews for the Tucker principal. Again, John Phelan and I served along with John Redden, Becky Padera, Marilyn Decker, teachers Elizabeth Spitz, Trish Leahy, parents Steve Praxia, Suzanne Cardy, and Kimberly Terry. And we interviewed all day Tuesday and will be interviewing all day tomorrow. And we'll bring you an update, that search. Again, remembering for your calendars, Frank Schroth, who's not here with us tonight, visited Milton High School and has done a tutorial on Milton Town Government with our debate team. They're watching old debate films so that they're preparing, and you can't, we're not going to tell you any of the questions, Ms. Padera. They're preparing for the ninth, April 9th, at Fuller, Monday night, to lead their second debate. And so they're putting a tremendous amount of time into their, preparing their questions and working on their presentation.
And I would just point out that last year, that debate was by far the best. The questions were the best and some of the candidates were thrown for a loop.
Well...
You said Monday, April 9th. April 9th is a Tuesday.
So it's, I think, I believe it's April 9th.
It's Tuesday, correct?
It's Tuesday.
It's Tuesday.
It's April 9th.
Great. And then another, the council on aging, on the 25th at 9:30 in the morning, they'll have another debate. And is there a third debate?
Yes.
There's a meet and greet at Colley Cut Cunningham, PTOs.
Oh, the Colley, all the PTOs are joining together at Colley Cut Cunningham?
No, it's just Colley Cut Cunningham.
Just Colley Cut Cunningham? Again, on the website, you'll be able to see all the local school events. School vacation for April begins on April 15th. Town elections are April 23rd. Mr. Jet's...
April 30th.
Oh, April 20th. Oh, no, town elections, do I mistake, it's not the 23rd?
30th.
It's the 30th. It's a good thing everyone's paying attention. Mr. Jet stole my thunder about, but here's a quiz. What day are they, what morning are they going to be on?
25th.
25th.
Great. April 25th they're going to be on. Another applause for Eileen Mullin. Mecca arrived at the other, at Milton High School the other day with flowers, recognizing her as the teacher of the year. And on April 24th, there'll be an awards event that we'll represent you at, at the Common Market. This is one closing, two closing notes. In your packet tonight and on the website, the MFE Teacher of the Year nominations are out. And the nominations are due by April 12th. Summer school, Mr. Phelan is working with the summer school leaders to get that information out. So at our next meeting, we'll have a presentation and for the viewing public, give you a wind-up on that. But this is an exciting note. Mr. Phelan always says Bill Duchesne is one of the most gifted people in the district. And they write to us that he graciously hosted two playwrights in his grade seven drama class, Katie Pearl and Lisa Demore, two award-winning artists based out of New York City. They're working on a project called Milton, where they are collecting the thoughts, experiences, and unique talents that connect the many different Miltons across this country. To read more about this project, their website, you, we'll put the website on the front of our website so that individuals can see it. They're going to create a play with the students at the middle school and will publicize when that event will happen. So that's very, very exciting news.
May I just add to that?
Oh, and the last day of school, we're getting lots and lots of calls, I didn't mean to interrupt you, is the 24th. The 24th of what month? June. June.
Ms. Sheridan.
I was just going to say that Brian Kelly of Talk of the Town on Milton Cable interviewed those playwrights while they were here in Milton, visiting with Mr. Duchesne, so...
And a closing note, last week you saw Carolyn Lyons and she, we did submit, and in your green folder, I've put a copy of the letter that we submitted to the campaign for proficiency of all students reading at the end of grade three. So I'll keep you informed on when we hear about our acceptance.
Mr. Walker.
Thank you for all of that. On the request, our school committee request of superintendent list, I wanted to add something. When the Tucker came in and did its presentation a few weeks ago, I asked Marcia what we could do to help. And she suggested that adding an art and science component in the summer program would be helpful. So can we just make sure that's on the list and find out what the status of that is?
Yes, I wasn't at that meeting.
No, you weren't.
But I have to, I'll have to make sure we get the, an ad, a tick list. And I think you also asked her which else she needed.
Well, that was the context in which she answered that question.
Oh, she get, but I think she was actually thinking about it and going to put it in writing.
Great.
As a, before she leaves the Tucker School.
Anything else for the superintendent? Well, thank you. We'll move on. The one item under my report is the smallest document that we have in front of us tonight. I'd ask for people's comments and responses to the superintendent's mid-cycle review that you were given last week. Yes, Ms. Kelly.
Just, I guess I'm a little confused as to, do we have an expectation, like is it set up, what we're supposed to be doing in this mid-cycle review? I mean, I appreciate all the information. I think it's great. I think anytime that you can have a sort of a check-in and say how we're doing, are we on track? I think that's a great thing. But I don't, you know, from a policy perspective, from a procedure perspective, did we establish what this would be?
So we haven't, we haven't changed our policy to align with this yet. Our plan was to go through the first year of this and see how it played out. And actually, Superintendent Gormly called this the mid-year review, but it's, it's mid-year in this year, but it's our mid-cycle. It's a two-year, two-year cycle. So mid-cycle would actually be in June. So Ms. Gormly and I have been talking about maybe adding a slight update in June, obviously not redoing all this wonderful documentation that's here. But our goal was really to go through the process once and see what we, get the feedback of the committee as well as the superintendent and see where, where we want to go from there.
If I might to Mrs. Kelly's remark, I had called a few superintendents who were going through the similar cycle and they, they hadn't reported out. And in the regulations that I was going to put in your booklets, there's really no detail on the school committee's reaction to updates. But there was one that if, there was a reference in the mid-cycle that if issues came up within the district, that these goals could be added to, expanded to.
Ms. Padera.
I mean, I went through all the material. I assume we're just supposed to make comments on things that we saw within the material? Is that right?
It's appropriate.
Okay.
I won't go as far as to say you're supposed to, but I'll say it's appropriate.
Is that right? Okay. So there were just two main things that I noticed. One of the things was all the information on leadership walks I thought was extremely helpful, especially the way that the classrooms were evaluated in terms of what they wanted to see or were looking for, engaging students and the different types of learning that they wanted to see. I thought it was fascinating because each school broke it down in terms of how they did it. I thought that was fantastic. It was something new for me, obviously, as a new school committee member. So I really appreciated that information. I loved it. The only other thing that stuck out to me was the STEM professional development, where the teachers really seemed to want to get that help again next year. So I just thought that was over, there was such really great feedback, but there's one thing that seemed really consistent, that the teachers really want that help again next year with Marilyn Decker or whoever would provide that. So those were the two big things for me.
And may I, in the learning walk, in the expectation, each principal in a different format, and as I wrote to you, if you wanted to come in to the office, use the feedback from the principals. One principal wrote a letter to each teacher. Another principal sat down with each teacher, giving the feedback from the learning walks. And some principals extract the feedback and share it with the entire school.
Mr. Walker.
I thought the information was helpful, but I'm more focused on the fiscal 13 goals that you developed, which I thought, as we discussed several months ago, I thought you did an excellent job on that. And I don't need to reiterate that we have, you have some aggressive, very aggressive goals that you'll need to achieve. So by September, improve the proficiency index scores and meet the 2013 targets for the African-American black subgroup under STEM. By June 2013, 85% of grade one teachers will report that the implementation of the Wido Robotics Program has been successful. And by June 2013, we'll have agreement on a teacher evaluation tool. So those are both substantive and critically important objectives. So I'm hopeful that we're working towards those. I know we are. And I think the, the performance to date in general has just been outstanding. So keep up the good work and let's hope we can achieve all of those objectives.
Any other comments?
Yes. I would agree with everything that you've already said. And I wanted to add that about the STEM program is that I thought it was great that you all just jumped into the fray and you had thoughts about it and some actions taken about it before it became public, but you really jumped into it and got, pulled off an incredible feat, I think, in very little time. And those of us who work in schools really understand, I think, everybody does, but it's really hard to pull that off. And I thought you did really well with that. I'm glad to see that. The learning walks, I'm glad about them. I, I was a little concerned and then I realized it was coverage that a lot of the administrators, not the principals, but the other administrators really can't get on them, get to go on the walks because there isn't coverage. And, and that was really helpful to see who's able to go and who's not able to go. And I appreciate the honesty on that and, you know, look forward to a plan on how more of them can get there because it is a coverage issue. Can't take the nurse out of the building and have sick kids. And I'm glad to hear you say what the follow-up was around that because I was curious. It's not appropriate for us to hear that in public or for us to hear that, but I'm glad to hear that there's a way for that feedback to get shared because I think that's really important. Two more points is that I thought that because you do it so well, you didn't think to include it, but around your communication efforts, like you do a great job with it and you don't rest on your laurels. Like I think this is another piece of the communication, the school committee punch list that you've developed, that is, has really been great and all the work you do with the PTOs and the MFE and all of those folks. And then I promise just one last thing. I think you've had a lot of advocacy around the visual arts and around clubs and sports. And I think that that's a continuing, you know, for our, and I don't want to say at risk, but for our communities, our community, that we need to keep working on that. And I'd like to see some work done, Mary, not to add to everything you're doing, but we've talked about this. Some work in thought in brainstorming around the athletic program in terms of how it's funded, how the athletes are helped to apply for colleges, how our students are recognized. You've done a great job in bringing the kids here, but, you know, I know you'd like to see more of that public recognition. And I don't think that's all on you, but I'd like to see us, that sort of stuck out to me, that there's a lot of those things that you're already doing that you're not giving yourself credit for, in there somewhere in this big binder. And then some things I'd like to see.
If I might, it's interesting, the tick list, Mr. Walker initiated the idea for the tick list. And the other day, we were with a group of administrators and I think, Mr. Phelan, you had concur, somebody made the comment that after the first grade choice with English or French immersion and the success of STEM, a huge impact and night was the kindergarten and first grade STEM night with 400 people at the Colley Cut Cunningham and more fathers than we've ever seen at an elementary school event. And I said to the group, Ms. Bagley Jones wanted that night. And so...
And I couldn't even go.
And so out of your ideas, when we bring them back, and again, journaling them and following up, that was a really good idea, that before people made their choice, they actually got to see children doing the STEM and saw Marilyn Decker. And we think that it had an impact.
Mr. Walker.
Just one small detail question. On the Cunningham learning walkthrough form, I understood all of the, the different check-offs except for level of Blooms. What is level of Blooms?
Blooms taxonomy.
Blooms taxonomy?
Oh, Blooms taxonomy.
Could you tell me a little more because that doesn't help me either.
When, again, in the order of thinking and reading, are you reading at a literal level or is your comprehension that at a higher level, that you have to make interpretations when you're going in on questioning? Are you questioned one word answers? Or do you have to read the material? And you probably, you have to revert back to your high school psychology class or education class for that.
Thanks.
Anything else from the committee?
Can I just ask a question on this first section, Mary? These handouts here, the lead for literacy memos, they're great. And there's some really great ones in here and especially some of the ones around parents. What are you actually doing with these? I couldn't really tell.
Like, you know, I sent... Like, you know, I sent you an email. I just can't believe you didn't read it at 6:00, Ms. Bagley-Jones.
But, sorry, I was still at work.
But I'm being facetious, I apologize. So, it was interesting. We want to start handing out in a clever way, not, you know, here's something for you to read and we're never going to get back to you. So, we're thinking of creative ways to take snippets out of all this material and give it to our teachers and have small focus groups or lunch around one of the themes. And so, when on early literacy, you know, it's just out there everywhere, I am forwarding all of these articles to you, that this came to my attention from a peer, that it was very, very clever around early literacy. And then Carolyn Lyons sent it this afternoon and said, "This was just published, you might want to think of it." So, I have to tell you, it's on the agenda for our leadership group, how to take this, share it, break it, because, you know, again, you saw James Chet tonight, well, he wouldn't be doing the early literacy, but closing the achievement gap, how to target the material and provide that research to our teachers and staff, but then have some kind of follow-through and give it to them, you know, whether they look every other Thursday for a piece of literature from us, you know, something that, and then survey them, is this really of assistance to you? Or, so we're going to brainstorm with our leadership group. I wrote to Carolyn Lyons and Ada Rose Marin, and we'll look to other school systems how they're using this information.
Great. Thank you.
Ms. Kelly.
Thank you for all this material. I guess the one question I have, which seems to me is sort of the biggest goal, but the student, oh, sorry, the student outcomes, so where the goal is for CPI scores to have met the mark. Do we have testing that we're doing not, and granted, you can't necessarily correlate the MCAS too, but do we have interim testing that gives us a sense of whether we're making progress at this point? And if we do, that would be, you know, a great data point to be included in something like this. Because I think ultimately, and I think we've talked about this before, MCAS can't be that we hold our breath and hope that we achieve whatever that goal is. And so, if there's internal testing that you folks have developed that is getting, you know, the sense that we're making progress, that kind of information would be important.
The first step to that is in your book, and again, I made the remark that this is probably of more value to me than it is to you. Under Assistant Superintendent Phelan's leadership, if you take a look at in every single discipline, they've given you an update of where their assessments are, whether it's end-of-the-unit, mid-year, final assessments, and then sharing those system-wide so that I've given you what the assessments are. And Mr. Phelan has expectations for every department in the development of those assessments. And the charge was, and if you saw the beginning page on the proficiency gap led by John Phelan with leaders from across the district, they actually went to every school and who are the children and what are the plans for children at risk or children who are not making the mark. So, really, two, hand in hand, I've given you detailed, and again, we'll do that at the end of the year and see how the assessments have improved with the professional development time at the high school. That's one of their goals, to have mid-year, common assessments mid-year, to sit down and look at the mid-year, look at the end-of-the-unit common assessments. And again, those are for all students, but all students at risk because unless you target those children with the appropriate instruction. And hopefully, when we get through town meeting, those advancement initiatives will absolutely concretely drive student achievement in every area. And I think that, I would tell you that one of our instructional leaders, her husband is on the forefront of science instruction in the state, Martha Winnaker, and she said, "I can't wait to go home and tell my husband that science made the top three in the Milton Public Schools." So, again, and the emphasis on science instruction is going to be integrated into the math. And again, the need for the reading to improve, to be able to make those gains in science are huge.
Anything else from the committee?
I think I'd just like to say, as I said last week when you passed this out, Superintendent Gormly, that you've gone above and beyond, and I think that this should be the model for other, if truth be told out there, if people got ahold of this, this would be the model of exactly how superintendents would perform and reflect on their process in this evaluation tool. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I don't think at this point we need to take any action on this in terms of a vote or anything like that, but I think it's been a chance to look it over and reflect. As has been stated, we'll have to, at some point, as we work through this new evaluation process, update our policies to reflect the new current practice. With that, move on to the finance subcommittee report. Ms. Kelly, do you have anything for us this evening? I have a header, but I don't have any items.
Yeah, nothing to vote on. We've talked about pulling together a presentation that would be available for town meeting if so desired, and we're taking a close look at sort of the balance of the year and trying to identify if there are any issues that need to be addressed proactively. So, we'll be bringing that probably to you at a future meeting. Thank you.
And before we leave?
On that point, which Ms. Kelly was referring to, a budget update that the superintendent gave us that identified some potential overages and underages. But I want to add to the list, Ms. Kelly and I, earlier in the school year, were pushing for finding some funding for a strategic plan, and I'd like to put that back on the radar. We deferred that because it at least became apparent to me that even with the schedule we had, that that strategic plan wouldn't have been able to drive the fiscal 14 budget planning. But now, I'd like to get that task completed so that it can drive the fiscal 15 budget plan. So, I think our projected cost was about $25,000, so I'd like to add that as a cost that we'll need to figure out how to fund.
I'll put that on the agenda for finance subcommittee for Tuesday.
Great.
And also, finance subcommittee had asked for the budget on the web, and so Sean Walsh and our office worked on that today. We spoke to Matt Gillis and Ed Cassady, and we're working on getting that up and running.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Policy subcommittee report.
So, we have several policies here. The first one is not being addressed tonight, so we'll start with B, C, and D, which are policies pertaining to public participation at school committee meetings, broadcasting and taping of school committee meetings, and special procedures for conducting public hearings. I'd like to submit those for reapproval without any edits.
Second, it's moved by Ms. Sheridan, second by Mr. Walker, to approve policies BE, DH, BEJ, and BEE for reapproval without alteration. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote then. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Next.
So, policy BG, policy development says vote to reapprove. We did have some minor changes in that. As you, the document that you have in front of you is the proposed policy that we would like voted on tonight. We just deleted a portion at the end of that policy that had to do with, I'll read it to you. Alternatively, and this is all about policy development, alternatively, any member of the committee may seek the approval of a majority of the committee to direct the administration to prepare a new or revised policy for consideration by the committee. Finally, policies may be suggested for adoption by duly constituted subcommittees. It went on, but such policies must be presented either by members of the committee or by the administration. We felt that that was handled, covered in that very first sentence that reads, however, any member of the committee may submit either a written revision to an existing policy or a new policy for consideration by the subcommittee. So, we just deleted the end of that and went with the first sentence there.
Do we have that copy or am I looking at the one we have?
The copy that you have is the proposed copy.
This older one?
That's actually the newer one.
That's the new one, with the deletion of that paragraph that I just read to you.
Got it. Thank you.
That's okay.
Ms. Kelly.
So, I guess I'd like to open up the discussion a little bit broader. Unfortunately, I wasn't at the last meeting where we actually deleted policies, not because we had created a policy that sort of combined and was overarching, and legal counsel said you should probably delete these policies as a result, but because the, ultimately, the committee decided that we didn't need them. And this policy that we're talking about now is exactly why, in my opinion, we need the policies that were deleted in the previous meeting. And it's because these are principles that are adopted to sort of guide the school committee, but also to have residents of the community be able to access sort of our guiding principles. And things like the school site council, which I think is a policy that was deleted last week or last meeting, are exactly what we need in policy, in my opinion. So, that's portion number one. And then number two, if we're going through the entire policy manual, just to Ms. Bagley-Jones' question, it would be really helpful that if edits are being made, and I don't know, and I apologize if this is really hard to do, but to have both copies, the original and then the proposed, or the original with a marked-up version, you know, the original marked-up with the proposed version, you know, marked-up so you could see what was being deleted, what was being added.
Track changes.
Track changes would be really helpful for, just for clarification in terms of the process. So, on the policies that have been deleted, I guess I would love to have an opportunity to open that back up, you know, even given the presentation tonight, to not have a policy on school councils and what the expectation is by the school committee, and quite frankly, how important that is to sort of the culture of our school system, I think is unfortunate. And I think, I guess I'm hopeful in having, in bringing up this topic, that we might be able to reconsider that, obviously not tonight, but at a future meeting.
Ms. Sheridan.
So, let me, because you weren't here last week, Mrs. Kelly, let me just explain to you what, how we prefaced the decisions to delete some policies. First of all, it's not possible. We've been working on this for a year, and we're only in part B of our policy. So, it's going to take years at this rate to go through the whole book. So, we're doing the best we can plotting through, trying to get, you know, read them thoughtfully and reflect on them and come back and, excuse me, represent you, represent to you our thoughts from our subcommittee meeting. But the decision that we made was based on the fact that either A, the policies were covered in the mass general law, and therefore we felt it was already covered in mass general law, and we didn't need a parallel policy necessarily to go with that, or in the form, in the case of the school site councils, that's based on the Ed Reform Act, and that's, again, mandated law. And so, we feel like those things were already in place, and we're not trying to say that they're not important by deleting them from our policy book in any way, shape, or form, but just trying to maybe streamline the process in terms of the volume of the policies that we have and the work that we have to do. The other piece of it was that some of them, some of the policies that we were looking at really weren't enforceable. There was nothing we could do if this policy wasn't upheld. It had no teeth. And that was.
Correct, Mr. Walker?
Absolutely.
That was the other reason why we chose to delete some of them. So, I mean, we can, again, go back and track change them if that's what's going to make the difference in this, but, and if that's the will of the committee, that's what we'll do.
So, if I might.
Ms. Kelly.
So, in terms of, you know, how you presented, obviously, you guys can make your decision. I'm just saying that it's difficult, especially for somebody who likes words as much as I do, to be able to figure out what the changes are. So, obviously, on the other, and I'm going to use the site council policy as the example, Many of the policies that we have here cite mass general law in them, right? And what we're doing is just bringing it more to the forefront to say, these are the things that are important to us. The fact that we now are saying site councils are not part of our policies, but if you want to find out about them, reference mass general law, whatever, and we don't have a reference for them, right? And even whatever the ed reform laws are, we don't have a reference for that. I just think we're stepping away from where we were. And I think I've brought this up before. If the intent is to go through every single policy here, in previous years when we did this, we had the, we had an advisor, an outside advisor, who helped us through that process. And I appreciate that you folks have taken this on, but it's really important to get it right and to get sort of the, you know, I think when you were presenting it at first, we were just reviewing them to make sure they were still in sync. I think the tone that has been presented by the removal of policies really has added a different layer of complexity to what you're taking on. And so, I guess my preference would be, I think the committee needs to think about this a little bit. I think we need to come back to it and say, is this really the way we want to go? Because to me, I think we're taking away from what was an established structure and guideline. So, if, you know, a community member just moved into town, wanted to find out what was going on, wanted to know what a school sites council was, they could come here to the policy and have a pretty good idea of what the expectation was. So, again, I'm bringing it up as a topic. I don't expect that anything different will be acted upon, but I'm concerned about sort of the direction that we're heading in terms of policy review.
Mr. Walker.
Well, I, Ms. Kelly, I think it's unfortunate that you weren't here for the discussion where a majority of the committee decided that it was appropriate to eliminate the policies that were eliminated. I've been a leading proponent for eliminating policies that are either unenforceable or not needed, and I will continue to be an advocate for that. And with regard to how we do these discussions, and I'm not sure what, I'm really glad that you guys have taken this on, but it's important to get it right means, because I think that we have been getting it right. But we spent hours and hours going through these policies line by line, comma by comma. And if the will of the committee is that we want to recreate those discussions here, then that's duplicative, and I don't think there's any need for the policy subcommittee. If we want to try to do a policy in meeting where we bring the old policy and say, hopefully you've read this in advance, and what do you think about what the changes should be, that's fine. But if you want us to do the staff work and we're able to articulate, we certainly should be able to articulate what the changes were. And where there's significant changes and very complicated changes, I might agree that a side-by-side comparison is important, but where Ms. Sheridan or I are able to say, well, there were the last two sentences in this policy that we deleted, I don't think we need a side-by-side comparison. And I would say, again, if that's, if that's the will of the committee, then we'll just bring the policies here and not spend the hours that we've been spending offline trying to make sure that we are getting this right.
Yes, Ms. Kelly.
I appreciate that. I just want to read from this policy. Policies are principles adopted by the school committee to chart a course of action. They tell us what is wanted. They may include why and how much. And again, I'm going to use the site council as an example, the site council policy. And yes, I apologize that I was not able to be at the meeting last meeting, but I don't know whether we were presenting it in this context either. So, again, I'm bringing it up for the committee's consideration to perhaps take up at a future meeting.
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
I think everybody brings up really good points. I do think the policies are a crucial part of the school committee's mission, right? I mean, that's the main thing that we, the budget, the superintendent's hiring, fire, evaluation, and school committee policies. It's a huge part of what guides us. So, I do think it's really important to have these kinds of discussions about it. The idea of going through the policy book at these meetings would make me fall off my chair. I mean, I just, I don't think I could do it, quite honestly.
I don't think it's a I don't think it's a productive use of our time.
I don't think I could do it. But I do like how you're going through the policies and I do appreciate that. I think that the way you've organized them, especially the last six months or so, has been really productive. I mean, in terms of I get a sense of what's out there. Sometimes without the track changes, I will admit, I get a little confused about what we're, and that was helpful sometimes when you did that. I like the idea of the assistant, or what was it called? The consultant, because you are doing staff work and that's a lot of time on your part. And I don't know what, if we have money for that, but, you know, maybe that's a way to help streamline it because you are doing incredible amount of work. And I'm very glad I'm not on that committee because it is an incredible amount of work. And I do think that there are, I think back to before I was on the school committee and being concerned about issues and looking at policies and finding them and knowing that new residents, new parents, or new issues for parents, that they do go look up at the policies.
Yeah.
So, and I do know about Ed Reform because of what I do, but not everybody does. And so maybe that's something we can think about because we want parents to be involved in residence and to be active and to know what to look for. So I'm not really saying one way definitively or the other. I just think everybody's bringing up really good points and maybe it's just further discussion as we go along. But I don't think we have the time to be able to discuss 15 different policies. Like, I appreciate the work that you're doing ahead of time. And I don't really know a way to make these two merge.
Well, and as you will recall, at the last meeting, I'm not suggesting that every time we recommend the policy should be eliminated, it should be eliminated. And as you will recall, at the last meeting, you said, you know, I really think this policy should stay. And we said, okay.
I did?
You did.
Yeah.
Right. So I get that.
I remember which one.
It wasn't the school council one.
No, no. But it's, but it's worth a discussion.
Right. We're open for discussion. This is, we're not trying to do this in a vacuum. It's the only efficient way we know how to do it. So if people, you know, and you get the agenda ahead of time. If you see a policy coming up that you have a problem with, certainly let us know. We're not trying to be bullies here and push something forward that isn't the will of the committee. I will say, I was just gonna, if you would like to reconsider the school council one, we could probably do that. I know what I was going to say. Track changes, sometimes we totally change them and we'll just have to give you side-by-side copies because sometimes track changes gets too convoluted and you lose the essence of the policy itself. So if you'll allow us to take the liberty to make that decision one way or the other, whether it's track changes or side-by-side policies.
But let me be clear. If we're going to do a side-by-side comparison every time we submit a policy for review by this committee, then we don't need the policy subcommittee. That's my view.
Ms. Kelly.
And I guess this is where the consultant comes in play, right? When we did this originally, when we started with the policy book that was not very well organized, it took a long time and it took a subcommittee and it took a consultant. And, but there was, Nesdeck was the sort of the consultant that basically said, this is what most committees have. And then the subcommittee would have discussions and say, yes, 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 no, 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 whatever. And they would, they would basically come forward and say, these packet of policies, this is what we're recommending. So they were starting clean slate. What you're undertaking, and again, I appreciate it, is you're looking at every single policy and then you may be changing a couple of words or changing a sentence or eliminating a paragraph. That's, that's different. And I appreciate, I mean, any subcommittee comes to the full committee to make a recommendation. You're recommending that we now adopt this policy as written. From my perspective, I was on the committee when we established the original policies. So seeing the, where you want the changes to happen is important to see what the context is. Do you know, so again, I appreciate it. If we can get it marked up, that's great. If not, I guess we'll just have to read them side-by-side and try and figure out which changes have happened, if that's the way we're going to go forward. I was, and I apologize, I must have realized this. I didn't think we were going through every single thing, but you are, your endeavor is to go through the entire policy book?
Well, Mrs. Kelly, the proposed reconsideration dates on the ones that we're looking at tonight are January 24th, 2010. So we're, you know, when this policy was created and you signed off on it, you agreed that it would, you know, you had first and second readings and adoption, and that it would be reconsidered in a timely fashion.
Right. And so the question is, what are we setting up for ourselves, right? And I guess from a process perspective, does it make sense to take two sections a year and revisit those? And then you'll have a rolling cycle? Or do we do, just as you folks, I think, are intending to do, to go through the entire book, revise them all, and then say, okay, we'll have to do this in another four years? I mean, if you put it into a cycle, that makes a lot of sense. If you had said, we're just going to look at A, B, and whatever other letter, then that, that's one perspective to have about it. I don't know that I've heard what your goal is for this year for the policy book.
So we didn't have, our goal was to get as much accomplished as possible.
Right.
As you can see, we're still on policy letter B.
Right.
And it is April. So chances are, we're not going to get much further than policies A and B, which are many, in this school year.
Right.
And then we can see, I mean, these really are much thicker, denser policies in terms of the book. When you get into C, D, and E, they're, they're smaller pockets of policies. So, I mean, it can be the will of the committee. We were just, as the policy subcommittee, charged to reconsider them. And that's what we've done.
Do we have a motion?
We have a motion on the floor to adopt policy BG as edited. Is there any further discussion on this policy? Let us wander off a little bit into process, but I think we need to get back to the policies at hand. I have hearing for the discussion, so all those in favor of reapproving policy BG as edited. Opposed? It's unanimous. Next.
Policy BHE, which is the use of electronic messaging by school committee members. This is a vote to reapprove. We have deleted the final paragraph of this, and I'm sorry you don't have the deleted copy, but it talks about the public records law and how we, the open meeting law, how we cannot communicate in between times. And so we deleted a lot of the verbiage that was in there. I really feel like maybe what we should do is not discuss these edited ones any further. And at the next meeting, we can give them to you with the side-by-side copies. That's what I would like to do.
Well, there, this one, there's one more edited one. BIA.
Right, but then we're actually making motions to eliminate. And I don't know if everyone has had an opportunity to look at those.
So you're suggesting to table the remainder of them until our next meeting?
I believe so. I mean, it seems like it's the will of the committee that we have edited, you know, the track change copies in front of you or a side-by-side copy so you can see the edits before you make an informed, so you can make an informed decision. And we don't have those for you tonight, so.
What are the extent of the edits to BIA? Is it large or is it?
No, it's not large. The new school committee member orientation. I just would feel more comfortable waiting on all of them so that people can have the information that they're requesting.
So, since these are recommendations from the policy subcommittee, the policy subcommittee wishes to hold these for another, for our next meeting, we can do that. Yes, Ms. Kelly.
So before we get, so you're recommending to remove BIBA, which is the school committee conferences, conventions, and workshops. If we can get the, why would we want to remove that? Because we can't enforce it? Because it has a legal reference?
Do you want to take a look at the removals? BIBA, BID, and BK?
No.
Well, let's take this in order. Since we're going to go this way, let me just entertain a motion from Ms. Sheridan to table BHE and BIA until our next meeting. That way we'll just put those two policies, those are the ones that were edited, so she can bring track changes. Yep, Kelly.
I'm sorry, I mean, just a matter of process. I thought when we changed policies, there's a first reading and then a second reading. Is that not the way we were supposed to do things?
Oh, these are first meetings, first readings?
These are first readings?
Other than they're not votes.
Then they're not votes, if that's what they're intended to be.
I, I think if, we're going to try to move through this in a productive fashion, that the process which allows for a first reading, a second reading, and then a vote is not the most productive way to proceed. It seems to me that with, in most cases, with a brief but informed discussion about rationale and edits, to the extent there are edits, that the committee, each of us can make a decision based on that discussion, whether to vote to approve or not to approve. In the small number of instances where that cannot occur, then we might defer the policy for either further revision or a vote at the following meeting. But I don't see the need to hold to a process that has a first reading, second reading, and then vote every time we review a policy.
I would have to look at our policy manual. I know we have a first reading and second reading prior to adoption. I don't know if it says anything about prior to reconsideration. I'm not sure it does. In any case, let me try to do this in some order. I asked for a motion. Did I get one?
You did.
Okay.
I think I made it before you asked.
To table policies BHE and BIA until our next meeting so that we can get edited copy, we can get the before and after copies.
I thought the motion was to defer the rest of the agenda.
Well, I mean, do we want to walk through the three that are proposed for elimination to get reasons for, at least reasons for elimination? Or do we want to start that discussion as well next time?
I think we'll take them in substance next time.
All right, then we'll just, we will defer the rest of these until our next meeting.
Just one second, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so the rest of the policy subcommittee report, we'll defer to our next meeting. Anything else from the policy subcommittee?
No, thank you.
Old business, citizens speak, topic response. Been a while since we've had citizens speak. Next meeting agenda items. Any new items? I don't see anyone still here for citizens speak. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of negotiating strategy, collective bargaining with the Milton Educators Association, not to return to our concession, but to adjourn directly from executive session.
Salute.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Walker, seconded by Ms. Sheridan. Roll call vote, Ms. Padera?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Yes.
Ms. Kelly, yes. Thank you all.